November meeting of the Committee of Externer Relations. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. All right, I'll ask Chris McClure to please call the role.
Chair White.
Here.
Vice Chair Valentine. Mr. Blaine. Mr. Bryan. Mr. Everett. Mr. Kodes. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Great, thank you. Our first item of business is to review and approve the open and closed minutes of the September 27th, 2023 meeting. Do I hear a motion to approve the open and closed minutes of the September meeting? Thank you, Chair Pryor. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye. All opposed? Like sign. All right, the motion carries. Our next item of business is to make a recommendation to the Board about an appointment to the WUNC Board of Directors. Vice Chancellor Cameron Farwell, are you here? There, hi. Is here to present.
Good morning. The Board has two slots to fill on the WUNC Board of Directors. Today for your approval is a proposed appointment for one of the two remaining positions. For context, the WUNC Board has seven members appointed by the Board of Trustees, as well as two ex officio members, including myself and Paul Hunt and the General Manager. So this Board has already made two appointments over the summer, and this appointment would leave one more for future consideration. Previous WUNC Board members have agreed to continue serving until all the appointments are made. I'm happy to answer any questions, and otherwise I'll turn the floor back to Chair Ramsey.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Vice Chancellor Farwell? All right, do I hear a motion to approve the proposed nominee for the WUNC Board of Directors?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion or debate? Oh, I need a second, sorry. Thank you, Trustee Blaine. Second. Any discussion or debate? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. All right, the motion carries. Both of these items will be placed on the consent agenda for the full Board's approval tomorrow. Our next item this morning is to hear a presentation from Heather McDonald. I would like to take a moment, though, to introduce Doug Monroe, who was here to introduce Heather. Doug is a Tar Heel graduate, class of 78, where he was a Morehead Scholar. And at the White House, we call that a Morehead Schmorehead. And he is a father of two more Tar Heel grads. He's also the Executive Director at Praxis Circle, a nonprofit dedicated to building worldviews. But more notably, Doug is the Acting President of UNC's Alumni Free Speech Alliance, AFSA. For those of you who are not familiar, AFSA is a nonpartisan organization led by UNC alums with a mission to support and defend free speech, academic freedom, and viewpoint diversity at UNC. So Doug, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Ramsey. So the UNC Free Speech Alliance is a nonprofit, nonpolitical in a legal sense, organization of alumni dedicated to free speech, academic freedom, and viewpoint diversity at UNC Chapel Hill. We're a group of alumni, part of a national organization that includes pretty much all the Ivies, Harvard, Yale, Princeton, Cornell, Dartmouth recently, MIT, they're wild and crazy, UVA, we'd love to get Duke, they're always slow on the uptake, Berkeley, Stanford, I could go on, but we have 30 different colleges so far. And what we're trying to do is just create an independent organization to network locally with our universities, faculty, administration, and students to advocate for our primarily First Amendment cause. I want to highlight the fact that it's not political in the sense that we have as many Democrats and Republicans, believe it or not, throughout the organization nationally. The one thing we all share is a dedication to free speech. We invited yesterday Ms. McDonald to Chapel Hill to speak to the faculty, students, and public about Carolina's admissions, administration, and curricula after the Supreme Court's recent ruling. It was an excellent presentation, and I'm happy to introduce her briefly starting from here, because you want to hear her opening statement, and I want the Board and anyone else have time to ask her questions. She'll tell you exactly what she thinks. I think, just, I'm revising my pitch here a little bit. Seeing her yesterday, I can tell you she loves Western civilization, the canon. She loves the universities in this country, and she loves the students. And she wants the best for them. And I think she really, really is totally embraces fairness, equality, justice, excellent merit, and human flourishing. And I don't think there's anyone in America, there are people that are equal to her, who really know the data and have rolled up their sleeves to look at the university's situation nationally. So this is the boilerplate. Heather is a Thomas W. Smith Fellow at the Manhattan Institute, a contributing editor of the City Journal, New York Times bestselling author of several books, including "The War on Cops," and I love these long titles. "The Diversity Delusion: How Race and Gender Pandering Corrupt the University and Undermines Our Culture." And this year, "When Race Trumps Merit: How a Pursuit of Equity Sacrifices Excellent, Destroys Beauty, and Threatens Lives." Ms. McDonald was raised in the Los Angeles area, from Andover. She... Well, she must not have gotten into Carolina. You know, it kind of happens. So instead, she attended, graduating in my class, Yale, where she was summing in English, followed by Cambridge, masters there, I believe also in English, and a JD from Stanford Law School. She is a self-admitted recovering postmodernist. Now, I'm going to give these two books to the Chairman, and I want you to know that neither we or the Chairman or any of the Board members are endorsing Ms. McDonald. You can tell I'm a fan, and I admit that. But I have two books here. The first is my personal favorite, "The Diversity Delusion." And this is my characterization. It basically discusses the problems that develop when identity is emphasized too much in universities, identities of all types, to the exclusion of the person, his or herself, or any variety of his or her. And she also, well, she, the second book, this is a sort of a problem statement. This second book is, it's called "When Race Trumps Merit", kind of suggests where she thinks schools need to go, need to go back to more of a merit-based approach. And she talked a lot about that yesterday. And so with that, I am pleased to introduce to the Board Heather McDonald. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Monroe. Thank you, Ms. White, for inviting me here, and this is an extraordinary privilege to be before an organization that has actually vowed to obey the law. As you well know, after SFFA v. Harvard, there were very few universities that issued an unequivocal pronouncement that they would follow the new law of the land. The UNC Board was almost unique in its willingness to say, "We are a nation of laws, we are a university of laws, we will make whatever changes are necessary to conform to the Constitution." I applaud you for that. I also applaud you, I was very impressed this morning in the Daily Tar Heel to read a collection of op-eds on the current Hamas uprisings across college campuses. And your Chairman of the Philosophy Department wrote a very discerning op-ed objecting to the use of the paraglider iconography in various student pro-Palestinian pieces of propaganda information flyers, but making the crucial distinction that even if he record, one defines this as hate speech, hate speech is protected. So he was not asking for the cancellation of this imagery. He was merely expressing his own opinion and calling for greater responsibility and a change of opinion on the part of the student activists. So that is absolutely the line that needs to be taken. And obviously, UNC is on a very, very powerful course. I'm going to briefly revisit SFFA v. Harvard, just because I'm sure it's continually controversial, certainly on other campuses and indeed on UNC. And I would argue that it's an opportunity to refund universities across the country on what should be their sole and obsessive purpose, which is passing on a civilizational legacy from one generation to the next. Universities are about knowledge, about a joy in knowledge, a love for beauty, and the pursuit of truth. They are not political organizations. They are not about social justice. When politics or social justice become their mission, the disinterested pursuit of knowledge will be compromised. And Max Weber wrote a fantastic lecture called "Science is a Vocation" that clearly sets out the boundaries of and the incompatibility between politics and the disinterested pursuit of truth. So SFFA has mandated the elimination of racial preferences in college admissions. That's the law. But is it prudent? Is this a good thing? How will eliminating preferences affect the object of the university, passing on our civilizational legacy to each new generation of students? Such elimination will greatly improve the ability of UNC to fulfill its mission of knowledge. What you must understand, if I may be so bold as to say so, is that racial preferences harm their alleged beneficiaries. And let me take this out of the very difficult issue of race, and let's put it in terms of sex or gender. If MIT decided that it wanted more females in its freshman class for gender equity purposes, and admitted me with SATs on my math portion of 600 on an 800-point scale, and the vast majority of my peers who had not been admitted under a gender preference regime had close to 800, if not 800, which is pretty much the reality at MIT, what's going to happen to me in my freshman year? The classes will necessarily and quite legitimately be pitched to the class average, which is students who have mastered and triumphed in pre-calculus and calculus. And I will have been admitted to a school where I don't match the academic qualifications of my peers. What's going to happen? I will fall behind. I will struggle. I would have done perfectly well. 600s on math SATs is a perfectly respectable score. I would have done perfectly well had I been admitted to Boston College or Boston University. These are respectable schools. The elitism in the college preferences discourse is truly astounding. The idea that gets put out by the most elite universities, which is, "If you don't go to Harvard, if you don't go to Yale, your career is over," is preposterous. You can get an education, you can have a decent life by going to schools where you are matched. So I, at MIT, am going to struggle, and what's going to happen? I will likely maybe switch majors, my aspirations to proceed in a STEM field. I'll say, "This is not, science is clearly not for me." And who's going to step up and give me a ready-made explanation for my difficulties? The diversity bureaucracy. They'll probably persuade me that the problem here is not that I was admitted to a school where I'm not competitively qualified, though again, I would be qualified for many decent, excellent schools, but that I'm the victim of a rape culture or the patriarchy, and that my academic struggles are the result of the fact that MIT does not have a culture of inclusion and belonging. Well, the same happens with the case of race preferences. I know that I've picked up since my arrival in this lovely college town that there is a slight competition between Duke and Chapel Hill. I've just, I've sort of noticed possibly that's the case. But I am going to recommend to you the work of a Duke economist, who was an expert in the Harvard case, Peter Archidiqiano, who showed something that has been conclusively shown before, that if you want to increase the number of minorities in STEM fields, here's how you do it, you get rid of preferences. Because minorities who have been admitted to schools where they are not competitively qualified at Duke drop out of a STEM field, a greater percentage of black male freshmen at Duke intend to major in a STEM field than white male freshmen admits to Duke. But what happens because those black male students are admitted with over a standard deviation difference in their SAT scores from their white and Asian peers, is by the time you get to senior year, the graduating STEM majors are overwhelmingly white and Asian because the black students who intended to major in STEM switch majors to the humanities, to Black Studies. Again, these are students who were capable of succeeding in a STEM field, but they were done a disservice by being catapulted in an academic environment that took for granted mastery of certain fields that they did not have. Had they gone instead to a state university school, maybe not UNC, but there's obviously over a dozen of other alternatives, their chances of graduating in STEM would have been massively increased. And this finding has been shown again and again and again. But preferences do do one thing creative. They have called into being the massive diversity, equity, and inclusion bureaucracy. That bureaucracy exists to enforce a lie. And that lie is that colleges are actively discriminating against and hostile to underrepresented minorities. I would ask DEI bureaucrats in any school, whether it's Chapel Hill, Duke, University of California, you say that we are yet to achieve a culture of belonging and inclusion, that there are barriers that this university erects to the success of minority students. Name some names. Name me the faculty who are not profoundly committed to the success of all their students, who want probably their minority students to succeed more than any other student. Name me the administrators. I had the privilege of meeting Provost Clemens last night. I know for a fact this is not a racist man. Name me any other bureaucrat or administrator at UNC that needs to have interference run for him, that is the reason why underrepresented minorities at UNC allegedly need allies to protect them from circumambient racism. It does not exist. This is a school that believes in opportunity, that believes in equality, that is committed to educating all of its students. I would say that a entity in a university that is founded on a lie is an entity that does not belong. It is the enemy of free speech, whether here or every place else. It is now impossible to talk about the consequences of racial preferences, which is tragically that, and but not surprisingly, that the overwhelmingly majority of students admitted under preferences end up at the bottom of their classes. Your Board had a task force, the UNC Administration had a task force several years ago, looking at the problem of minority retention. It's a real problem, it's a problem everywhere. And the task force found that the likelihood of a student dropping out was directly proportionally correlated with the lack of academic skills. So it was perfectly predictable. If you let students in with a significant skills gap to those of their academic peers, they are going to struggle again. It is not their fault. It is the fault of the administrators who engaged in this cruelty of catapulting them into academic environments for which they wouldn't exist. I can tell you, I don't belong at MIT. It would be hell to be at MIT or Caltech. Ask yourselves. You may all be math whizzes, but maybe just among us, there's one who is not. Would you want to be catapulted into Caltech without sharing the qualifications of your peers? It is cruelty, and it is done only for the self-love of administrators who want to look out on their sea of diverse faces. It is not in the interest of those students. I would say that this moment of mass student outpouring in support of Hamas has been clarifying. Notice who's involved in these. It is the intersectional coalition that has been taught from the moment that they enter college that Western civilization is racist, that it's colonialist, that it's oppressive. Let me add a footnote. American civilization was white supremacist. It was oppressive. It was a function of white privilege. It was gratuitously nasty, cruel, heartless to blacks for generations in grotesque violation of America's founding ideals. It took an excruciating, long period of time for Americans across the board to realize the deep hypocrisy on which their polity was founded. But we are not that country today. We have changed, and that must be recognized. I will end. Going forward, I know there's proposals for a knowledge-based curriculum for a greater attention to the humanistic tradition of Western civilization to make sure that students are not taught to hate the thing that they should be down on their knees in gratitude for, which is the legacy of Western civilization. Cut back on the bureaucracy. Free up those funds for hiring more faculty that are dedicated to a humanistic mission. And UNC is already on a right path. It's an extraordinary university with a history of accomplishment in this state. And I know that you're going to make it an even greater one. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions they would like?
Madam Chair, I do.
Yeah.
Is that okay? Heather, thank you very much for being here. I'm wondering if you could maybe sort of expand on the economics of college a little bit, and sort of the differentiation. You talk about going to MIT versus maybe a mid-tier college or a community college. I've argued to some of my friends that if I could have talked my kids into doing it, I would have had them go to a community college for two years, even with AP credits, and take on a large number of electives such as working on HVAC systems or doing electrical work, because there's such a shortage of those trades. And then come to a university to maybe learn some business acumen and get that. But I'm curious as to your view on the economics of college and the utilization, like say, for example, you used yourself as an example, just hypothetically. Instead of going to MIT, you go to, I mean, name it, a college. Let's say you go to Virginia Tech instead. You know, and maybe at Virginia Tech, you finish in the top 5% of your class at Virginia Tech, where at MIT, you might be in the bottom 25. And what you know about the confidence that students have in picking and assessing the right institution to attend, if in fact they feel like college is for them?
Well, first of all, I find the whole discourse around college tuition just astounding. It holds colleges absolutely harmless for their obscene tuitions. It's, we pretend as if rising tuition is some naturally occurring phenomenon that is outside the control of universities. Nobody ever, listen to the public discourse, it's all about, "Well, we need more student loans, we need to increase government subsidies for these rising tuitions." Tuitions have risen at rates magnitudes higher than the cost of living, just as the number of bureaucrats in universities has way outstripped the number of faculty. And why the faculty are so supine before this is somewhat of a mystery, because money is being sucked away into the vast bureaucratic machine. All of this is completely within the control of the university. They shouldn't be bailed out by more student loans until there are very... They shouldn't be even hard decisions, but hard decisions made about why do we have this massive student services bureaucracy? A large part of the bureaucracy is because we are admitting students who are not prepared for college. And I would also say this, and this may not sit well in this room, but we have too many students going to college. College should be for people who really want advanced knowledge, that are driven by a passion for abstract knowledge. We should absolutely be valorizing trade skills, working with machines, understanding how to fix things, understanding the extraordinary infrastructure that gives us the blessings of this civilization. And to say that everybody needs a four-year college degree is preposterous. And yet, that is the exclusive direction of our public officials' discourse, whether it's Republicans or Democrats. They're all about expanding college access. When you have, at this point, the attrition after the first year of college is huge. About 40% of students nationally drop out in their first year of college. And within six weeks, the attrition rate is huge. These are students who have been pushed by a false narrative into something that they're not necessarily, it's not in their best interest. So yes, I know the idea of starting a community college to make sure that you've got the maturity for school and that you really need an advanced degree. I am not saying that people who are driven by the fire of higher education should not go to school, but let's be very confident that that's what they want to do. But the overwhelming burden on college administrators should be to make sure that the costs are not in this incredible inflation spiral. You know, the public yearns to know. They yearn to know, "Why is this so expensive?" And I would also say this, if I can put in a pitch for the humanities, I was disappointed when Betsy DeVos, the former Education Department Secretary under President Trump, extended what I view as a misguided way of evaluating college. And again, I'm not in the business of seeing it exclusively as about dollars and cents, but there's a movement afoot to evaluate different colleges on their added value to salaries when students leave. And we rate the different schools on how much extra money that their graduates gave. DeVos took this one step further. She wanted to rank majors based on the step up in student salary. I'm sorry, I'm a product of a liberal arts humanities education. I think that the end of college, it's an I think that the end of college, it's an end in itself to have had the privilege of reading these great books. And if I cannot show a direct financial advantage between being a classics major and having had the opportunity and the ability to read Escholus's great trilogy, the Oresteia in the original Greek, which I did not have. I wish I had. I read it in translation and it shook me to the core of the profundity, the understanding of human vengeance, passion, anger, and ultimately the triumph of justice that this fifth-century Athenian understood in a a setting of the Greek festival, the tragic festival that is terrifying to think about of the choruses on stage masked, moving back and forth in dance as they chant their choruses. That was a transformative moment for me. And whether it increased my salary earning potential, I don't care. I am a better person to have experienced that. And students should be told as well that their lives will be poorer if they die without having been exposed to the great classics of Western and indeed all civilizations.
I'm curious your take on the surveys and the rankings. And the reason I ask is that we oftentimes here always kind of pat ourselves on the back because we get the best value in higher education. But just in general, is that, are the rankings and the ratings all part of the higher education machine? Sort of a self-perpetuating thing to try and get more people to go to college because the school is ranked higher? I just have a contrarian's view that a lot of the ratings aren't really rating anything other than, you know, the predetermined criteria that they want to have the box checked.
I think that's probably right. We know we don't have any exit exams of knowledge. And there's been many, many studies. I recommend to you, Richard Arames. He's the dean of the education school at University of California Irvine. Wrote a book, I forget, Falling Behind. I can't remember the name of it. But he did administer some available tests of student learning. Probably Jenna Robinson would be able to give the title of his book. Academically Adrift, thank you. That found that students know less when they graduate. This was an average than coming in. Groups like ACTA, the American Council of Trustees and Alumni that I know is one of the sponsors of the Free Speech Alliances. They've also administered tests to the top 50 universities testing their knowledge of American history, coming in and out. Again, the effect of college is a net decrease in knowledge. Why? Because students are spending a lot of time in non-academic activities, in pursuing the veneration of their own identities, which is narcissism. Again, something that the DEI bureaucracy encourages in students to think that it's an accomplishment to be female. It is not. It's not an accomplishment to be black. It's not an accomplishment to be white. It's not an accomplishment to be gay. And yet, the DEI bureaucracy incentivizes students to think that their identities are the most important as defined by these trivialities of sex and race, as opposed to have you mastered calculus? Are you a chess whiz? Are you impassioned by the late piano music of Johannes Brahms? Do you know how civilization spread across the early Mediterranean? Those are things to hang an identity upon, not the trivialities of race, sex, and other varieties of current narcissism.
Yeah. I see.
Well, I'm a free speech absolutist. And so I see the, I don't want to use facile political categories, but I'm going to do so just for, well, the people who've been objecting to, if I may be so crude as to say the campus progressive left's penalization of unorthodox speech when it comes to race or gender identity that have objected to the facile wielding of the term hate speech for somebody who simply talks about the inevitable consequences of racial preferences. I'm worried that I see people that would be roughly in that same universe of objecting to the penalization of unorthodox speech when the penalizers are coming from the progressive left. They're taking up the same tools right now. So I would allow, without any equivocation, the pro-Hamas rallies, as long as they remain exclusively speech-based. Obviously, any kind of violence, physical harassment, that is against the very purpose of a university, which is to be able to solve our disputes through rationality and reason in language. Now, this whole thing began, and it should, as I say, this should be a very clarifying moment. Look at what you have created. The ideology that is dominant is, and the chants that are dominant of settler colonialism. This is a direct product of the entire Studies archipelago. Whether it's ethnic studies, Black studies, queer studies, any movement that can come up with the absurdity of queers for Palestine. When if you're a queer in Palestine, you are not going to be allowed the freedom of doing a gay pride march. And yet, we have these bizarre alliances because they are all united against what is perceived as the enemy of Western civilization. So, but this began with the perceived slowness of college presidents to declare their opposition to the Hamas terror attacks of October 7th. And what was often pointed out was that that silence and that hesitancy and many of the statements that did come out. And I would also add, first out of the gate, in many cases, were the DEI bureaucrats because they now view themselves as sort of the main spokesman of universities as we saw at the Stanford Law School when the federal judge Kyle Duncan was interrogated by Stanford Law's DEI bureaucrat, Tyrion Steinbach. That was a scandal, that whole incident. But the DEI bureaucrats came out with the most bland. They, you know, would talk about the events recently in the Middle East and analogizing it to earthquakes, say, was amazing. But people pointed out that that hesitancy, the reticence was not in evidence after episodes like George Floyd's death. You know, I don't know about UNC, but practically every other college in the country came out with an immediate unequivocal statement that George Floyd's death represented white supremacy, that the police were racist, that America was racist, and that this was happening on a daily basis. There was no ambiguity. There was no two sides about it. And the assumption was, is that they spoke to a absolutely ideologically unified campus, that there could be no debate about the white supremacy of America. After the Hamas attacks, clearly, there was terror on the part of many college administrations of alienating the progressive left. And so they were very careful not to say anything that would offend the progressive left. If your university was so fortunate before September 7th to have embraced the Calvin principles of institutional neutrality, which says that it is not the role of the university as a whole to take politically charged positions. We will stay out of the fray and allow those debates to go on campus without anybody feeling that taking a particular side will fall afoul of the official university public. Good for you and lucky for you, because now you have a reason not to weigh in. And ideally, that would have been the case. But far too many universities had already weighed in on a range of highly charged issues. And now their silence was deemed obviously constrained by their own politics. I would say, I I think I have written in the past that the therapeutic language of safety on college campuses has been way overused. And it is to a large extent, in most cases, vastly hyperbolic. Colleges are safe places. The entire wellness therapeutic infrastructure is teaching students to think of themselves as fragile and vulnerable. And that is not a good way to prepare young people for lives as adults. In this case, if you have actual threats being lodged by one side against the other, actual threats to safety, that's a problem. But I guess I would say that, as difficult as it is, if there are solely speech-based protests going on, even those that chant for what is, for many people, repugnant positions. We all know the chants, "From the river to the sea", that has been pointed out many times, seem to be an encouragement of the effacement of Israel. That is, you can call it hate speech, as your chairman of the Philosophy Department did, but hate speech is constitutionally protected. It is better to know the hate that is out there than to cover it up. It is not going to go away if you censor it. It is better to know what people think and meet them in the forum of public discourse than tell them they have to shut up.
Thank you. Trustee Jones and then trustee Kett.
Heather, thank you for your time last night and here this morning.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I really appreciate your defense of the humanities.
Thank you. Good. Oh, yay, another humanities person.
And speaking against, I guess, the vocationalization of higher ed. I spoke with, and I'm probably going to mispronounce his name unfortunately, but I'll just say Peter A. Arisidiakana.
Arisidiakana, yeah.
Over at Duke after the SFFA ruling came out. And one of the, one of the big ideas that he had in terms of looking at admissions was to be able to take information about cohorts of students and then be able to give them a percentage probability on the front end of their being able to complete a given course of study at a given school over a set time period. And I was wondering if you might could address that, if you had thought about it in that manner. I personally think that if someone gets admitted to a given school and they have an intended course of study, it would be kind of nice for them to have an idea of how likely they are to be successful in a reasonable period of time.
Well, so would this be, they've already been admitted? And, or is this for the student, so the student's been admitted and he'd make a decision that if I go to this school with this?
That is correct.
I mean.
The conversation that he and I had, a student is admitted to school A and they intend to study subject Y.
I guess my question is, this seems to presume that we're still in a racial preferences regime. Because the issue of your chances of graduation, that's going to be important information. The more, it'll become the more important, the more there is a degree of mismatch.
His thought, and maybe we could take this offline, I guess, but his thought was to look at the student, their grades, their test scores, the classes they had taken in their particular high school, et cetera, and use that as a predictor of future success in college and a given course study rather than looking at preferences based on gender or race or things of that nature. That was a conversation we had.
Well, I would hope that the admissions office, and we can talk about views on admissions officers, would have admitted students with all roughly equal chances of finishing. As I say, to me, that that question seems to presuppose that you better think carefully about your chosen major because given your level of skills, you may not make it. Now, obviously, not everybody's going to be admitted with the identical profile. So there may well be degrees of variance within any given class. But yeah, I suppose, I mean, I do believe that the more information, the better, whether it's information coming into schools or information going to students. So the idea is either innocuous or somehow, I'm not understanding it, and it still presupposes preferences. But to the degree to which it's innocuous, why not? It maybe it's costly to do. But, and obviously, there's many people who defeat predictions, you know? Just because we're talking about group averages and skills doesn't mean that there's not individuals with any given group who don't vastly outperform not only their own group average, but those in other groups and vice versa. So I guess I'm, it seems like a fine idea. I don't object to it. I'd have to think about or know more about it.
Ms. Chairwoman, I know we're running out of time.
Heather, thank you for your presentation today. Of course, University of North Carolina is owned by the people of North Carolina. And we have a constitutional mandate to provide the benefits of the university to the people of the state. That's done through research, that's done through creating various leaders. And Chapel Hill plays a unique role in the state with that. So I took some of your comments as more directed generally at higher ed rather than at specifically what we're doing at UNC. Because I may be a critic, but I think we're doing probably 95% right. And I'll focus on my 5% critique out there. There are a couple of schools of thought, I guess. One is you hire and admit the best and the brightest. And then you use those top brains to provide the benefit to the people of the state. So you want the top researchers or brought in to then provide those benefits. And the second thought is to provide those benefits to the people of the state through an effort to integrate or impact them, whether that's a plumber or an electrician or part of the 70% of the population that doesn't have a college degree. And how do we change their lives? So taking all the other identity factors out of it, what do you feel about the responsibility of the university or the methods used by the university to impact those that aren't earning a degree?
I believe in knowledge. I believe in the extraordinary progress of civilization through such miracles as the scientific method, randomized controlled experiments. These were developments in the way we think about and analyze the world that changed history forever. So I think that the benefits of the pursuit of knowledge are widespread. And nobody needs to apologize for choosing in a universe where you have many different colleges and universities. I think every school should strive to be the best it can be. And we have ways of assessing skills. Let's, let's not pretend that we really don't know how to measure academic potential. We do. You know, there's, there's, there's exceptions, but by and large, schools continue to rely on objective standardized tests because there's no other metric that is as predictive of academic success. So I think that each school should try to get its best group of thinkers and students available. I, I value academic skill above all else. And students, there is enough of a variety of options out there, I believe, that I'm sure that any resident of North Carolina can find a school that is appropriate for him. His identity should play no role in his admission to any given institution. What should matter is, is this an institution that teaches what I yearn to know? Are the faculty there capable of giving me the thing that Faust sold his soul for, which is knowledge?
So as a follow-up to that, to summarize then, for fear of mismatch, the idea would be the university should use different tools to fit different levels. And then using things like standardized testing to assess and place people where they're most able to reach their full potential.
Right. There should be no exceptions. Use the same criterion, criteria of admission for every student. It's that simple. That do not give preferential treatment to some groups over others. And as I say, preferences that involve mismatch do their beneficiaries no benefit. That's what needs to be understood. They are cruel. So I think that, you know, if a school wants to be based on the arts, admit students that are passionate about learning instruments, learning dance, becoming, you know, members of theatrical troops. That's obviously another area of skill that deserves attention and should be fostered.
Thank you. My other Jim and Ralph, and then I thought, was that good?
I'll defer to trustee Meekins.
Well, just very briefly, I appreciate you being here, first of all, very much. And I picked up a little bit. Thank you. Picked up a little bit what Marty picked up on. Some of the statements you made about the SFFA case were more general, not specifically targeted towards UNC. Because I took issue with several things she said about that. First of all, UNC was not admitting students that were not qualified. And we were using a holistic approach. And I've talked to many of the students that were admitted over the years. And you made some comment that they didn't benefit by being here, and I will tell you they don't agree with that. So using my free speech, I would just say, I disagree strongly with some of the comments you made, but it's beginning. But then I started agreeing with most of what you said afterwards, just to make a point.
Great. I appreciate that.
I want to piggyback slightly on what trustee Meekin said. Does the principle that you've kind of articulated around race and gender, do you think that applies to students from rural areas of North Carolina where admission to Chapel Hill is less competitive than urban areas of the state or is more competitive?
Where admission is less competitive, you meaning for rural students, it's easier to get into Chapel Hill?
Yes.
Uh huh. I don't, you know, I'm often, the big alternative to racial preferences, there's a guy, Richard Kalenberg, who's been promoting this for decades now, is socioeconomic preferences, you know, that. And it's usually because we hope that this will be a surrogate that will give us the same degree of racial diversity, but without using race explicitly. And colleges come back and say, no, they won't, you know, if we don't use race, we will not get our our desired critical mass because there's too many poor white and Asians that will be admitted. And what we're looking for, let's face it, be honest, is black students. I don't believe that preferences are ever a good thing because I think mismatch is so real. So I don't, I don't think you're helping somebody by putting him into an academic environment for which he is not competitively qualified. It is not the end of the world not to go to UNC Chapel Hill if you are not bringing in the same qualifications as your peers that give you the same likelihood of succeeding as everybody else. I mean, again, I don't know why UNC Charlotte puts up with this BS. You know, why doesn't it say you can get as good an education here as at Chapel Hill? I know you guys love Chapel Hill understandably, but there are other places to get an education. So I would be, I would not make exceptions based on any other type of criterion than using a universal test of academic preparedness.
Great. Thank you. Okay. And then.
I would say, I think probably one of the reasons people are choosing different schools is there are different economic outcomes. So when you look at a graduate from Carolina that's then going to get a job, they can expect a much higher rate of pay perhaps than one of the other schools. So I think that's maybe, to answer your question, maybe that's why they might choose Carolina.
I see. Well, you know, that's, it's a shame that employers are such elite snobs. And, you know, there was huge business amic briefs at SFFA v. Harvard because they all wanted the fig leaf of being able to hire black students with Ivy League degrees. Every, you know, you can get rid of preferences and you'll have the same number of black students going to colleges before. Nobody is saying, nobody is coming close to saying that black students should not go to college. What opponents of preferences like myself are saying is they should go to college on the same conditions as everybody else to a school where they are matched to their academic peers. But the Google or, or American Express want to say, we recruit, you know, only from the top schools. Well, why not, you know, if you're so interested in black employees, it's the same students. How about you like, think about going to a broader range of schools to recruit? But our society is obviously obsessive about credentialing and the, the status that comes from going to these prestige schools. And as I say, it's a mystery to me why so-called second and third tier schools don't stand up to Robert Burgeno, the chancellor of UC, University of California, Berkeley, who after the voters in their wisdom passed Prop 209 banning racial preferences in government employment, including in college admissions. Robert Burgeno got up there and said, how will we create the leaders of tomorrow if we can't use preferences at UC Berkeley? And if I were the chancellor of University of California, Riverside, I would have said they will graduate from Riverside and they will be just as likely to be the leaders of tomorrow. We offer a solid education, but the, the snobbery that prevails in this discourse is completely nauseating as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you, Heather. Chancellor Gusswitz.
Yes, just quickly, I know we're trying to move on, but Heather, thanks for being here. I would have been at your presentation last night, but I was meeting with the Student Senate. And so I appreciate your remarks today. And you touched on a lot and would love an opportunity to follow up a little bit later. But there's one thing I just want to be clear about, and that is that every student at Carolina has earned their way to Carolina. I struggle with the assertion that administrators are admitting students who are ill-prepared to succeed here. We have good data to the contrary, and I'd welcome a chance to follow up.
I would say that this becomes a tautology that by definition, if we've admitted you, you are qualified to be admitted. The fact of the matter is, with all due respect, is that the UNC Retention Task Force recognized that there was a problem with retention with its underrepresented minorities and found that the likelihood of dropping out at UNC was directly correlated with the degree of academic mismatch. So you can say they were all qualified to enter, but if you care about retention, you know, every, every college, university system has massive bureaucrats now dedicated to retention, primarily because of preferences. So they may have all been qualified, but they face different likelihoods of graduating based on their competitiveness measured by the objective test of academic skills. So with all due respect, I know that you, you believe in the mission of diversity and you believe that you are making judgments that are not biased by race. But I would say that you will have greater success with all of your students by admitting everybody on the same scale as everybody else, with all due respect. And I know Chapel Hill has done a fantastic job in education.
Great. Well, thank you, Heather. You've given us a lot to think about. And I wanted to tell you, I really appreciate you extending your visit here to be with us this morning. So thank you. All right. Our next item is to hear a presentation. Sorry. Our next agenda item this morning is to hear a legislative update from Amy McComney. There you are. Our Director of State Affairs and Roxanna Kessler, Assistant Director of Federal Affairs.
Good morning, Chair White, Chancellor members. Always a pleasure to be with you. But especially with the long session in the rearview and a new state budget enacted that makes such important investments on our campus. Now that the dust has settled on the long session, we have a chance to be strategic, to think and plan and to make adjustments as we need and really appreciate the board's partnership in that regard and this committee. For today's update, I'm going to focus on developments since our last meeting in late September. Though it hasn't been long, there's still a full list of updates to share. So never a dull moment. Importantly, the legislature adjourned. October 25th, 10 months in, it was a long session. And the adjournment resolution provides for the chambers to return to Raleigh once a month as needed to consider a very limited list of items, veto overrides, bills affecting election law, things of that matter. So we don't expect, I think the leadership in both chambers has announced that most of these meetings will be procedural in nature. And if they're not, there will be an announcement in advance of that. So the adjournment resolution also set out the date for the short session. So you can mark your calendars. April 24th will be convening again in Raleigh for the second year of the biennium. There are a few legislative updates that occurred in the final month of session since we last met. So I will review those briefly. First and foremost, there were some changes to our Board of Trustees. A bill that was heard, a Senate Bill 512, added two new trustees to the governing boards at UNC Chapel Hill and NC State. And these appointments were later named in Senate Bill 761, additional General Assembly appointments were passed on the last day of session. It's great to see Brad Brenner here, who is our Senate appointee. And I look forward to seeing Vimal Kalappa, I think, I think I pronounced that right. Look forward to meeting him as our House appointee to the board, bringing our board membership to 15. There was also some changes to higher ed accreditation, a House Bill 8. That bill was signed into law by the governor in late September. And a provision of that bill prohibits accreditation by an accrediting agency for consecutive cycles. It also requires the Board of Governors to establish a commission to study alternatives to the current accrediting process and invite stakeholders, including those from other states, to participate. We're certainly following this closely and I'll defer to members of the administration to answer questions on that process. But there will be an interim report on efforts to recruit those stakeholders by January 1st. And then an additional follow-up report from the Board of Governors on September 1st of next year. Distinguished professorships, we've had some discussion about that recently. There's been some media reports and some additional focus on this provision in the state budget, which changed policy around the state matching fund for distinguished professorships. Going forward, the state match now applies to professorships in STEM fields. So guidance from the UNC System Office was shared with the campuses last week. And nothing in the law or policy prevents universities from raising private funds for endowed professorships in any field. I know the Board of Governors will formally update their policy to comply with the law in the coming meeting and have some additional background on that change. But glad to save that for another time. I think we may be low on time. Let's see. Okay, redistricting, that also occurred in the closing weeks of session. The General Assembly passed new congressional and legislative maps on October 25th. And those maps are likely to give Republicans at least three more seats in Congress and shore up their majorities in the state legislature. Candidate filing for the 2024 elections runs from December 4th to December 15th. And all 170 seats in the legislature are up on the ballot. There will also be races for the Council of State, the North Carolina Governor. And I hear there's an open seat in the auditor's race as well. I may have heard a little bit about that. The statewide primary is on March 5th. So. Triple. Of course. The statewide primary is on March 5th. So a lot of activity leading up to that primary, of course. And now that the maps are finalized, we're seeing numerous announcements, runs for higher office or announcements to retire. A notable announcement was from House Speaker Tim Moore, who announced his retirement from the General Assembly and later his intentions to run for Congress in the 14th district. As we all know, Moore is the longest-serving speaker in state history and is serving his 11th term in the House. Additionally, earlier this session, he announced he would not run for another term as speaker. So internal races for speaker can be sometimes contentious in the legislature. But in the closing days of session, a deal was announced featuring leader, leading members of the House Republican Caucus. And that deal would see the current House Rules Chair, Representative Dustin Hall, from, excuse me, from Caldwell and Mottogah Counties elevated to the speaker position. The House, the current House Majority Leader, Representative John Bell, representing Wayne County, would become Rules Chair. And the Deputy Majority Leader, Representative Brendan Jones, from Robinson and Columbus Counties would be elevated to House Majority Leader. While the deal is not final until an official vote of the caucus, it appears that this group has the support of the caucus and is poised to lead House Republicans after Speaker Moore completes his term. Couple other notable announcements, Tar Heel legislators who have announced changes that they would not seek reelection are Representative Kristen Baker of Cabarrus County and Representative Wayne Sasser, representing Stanley and McGurmard Counties. Finally, I always like to conclude my remarks with an update on our outreach. And Representative Sasser is a nice segue. He was on campus two weeks ago along with Senator Gail Adcock of Wake County for a joint nursing and pharmacy school event hosted at Eshelman. Representative Sasser is a Republican pharmacist and Senator Gail Adcock is a Democratic nurse practitioner. They discussed how they work across the aisle, particularly on health policy. We had nearly 150 pharmacy and nursing students in attendance, as well as faculty and staff and another 90 who joined us remotely. So it was a really excellent demonstration of civil discourse and collaboration across the aisle. And so great work by Dean's Kishuba and Howard and their teams for putting that together. Love to see that. Additionally, the Board of Visitors held its fall meeting last month. We were pleased to have legislators and other prominent state and local officials in attendance. I gave an update on the legislative session and the budget and fielded questions. Kelly Dockham provided a federal update. Many in the group approached me afterwards and asked how they can be helpful. And I know Chair White has been working closely with this group to, you know, really enhance communication with the group and focus them on ways that they can advocate for the university. I know they're engaged and they want to help, and so I look forward to assisting with that as well as we channel their interest into advocacy on behalf of the university. And at the same time of our Board of Visitors meeting, our Tar Heel Bus Tour was traversing the state. And just a note about the Tar Heel Bus Tour, top leadership in the legislature has shared with me their positive impressions of this effort. I know it's. Top leadership in the legislature has shared with me their positive impressions of this effort. I know it's certainly is, is noticed by, by those in the legislature and appreciated. And finally, a quick shout out to our amazing people in athletics and development, and for your efforts as trustees to give our state government guests an incredible experience when they come to campus for athletic hospitality. That's a big part of my job, especially these days. And athletics is a great face for us, for the university, a great touch point with, with our state government stakeholders. So I rely on so many people to make that happen, for those to go well. So big thanks to our development teams, our athletic teams. Public Affairs Office has hosted probably close to or more than 100 special guests so far this season. We've got one more home game this weekend. We've got another big crowd joining us and looking forward to welcoming folks and showing them a great time and lighting up the bell tower at the end of the night. So that concludes my remarks. Glad to take questions.
Yes, trustee Evan.
Thanks, Amy. Good job. Thank you so much for your work. Do you track the, all of our, of the various legislative matters?
So we do, we, our general alumni, alumni association actually puts together at the beginning of every session a list not only of our alumni, but also of other school in the system alumni. So we generally have a record of that and would be happy to provide that to members. Yes, absolutely. I will share that with all the members.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Amy? Great. Amy, thank you so much. For being here. And then is Roxana?
Yeah.
Hi.
All right. Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to provide a federal update. My name's Roxanna Kiesler. I'm the Assistant Director of Federal Affairs. I'm presenting for Kelly Dockham, who is in DC today as part of an event on Capitol Hill where she is highlighting a UNC initiative, a federally funded research center, which I will talk a little bit about in my update. Before my federal update, I wanted to first let you know that while I'm continuing to work on federal affairs, I'm also filling in as Interim Director of Community Relations for the Office of Public Affairs until we have a permanent director. So this is timely. As you all know, we have a newly elected group of local officials here in the community as of late yesterday. For the sake of time, I'm not going to go into detail on the election results right now, but we're looking forward to working with all of them, strengthening our town and gown relationships. So I just wanted to mention that. For our congressional update, moving on to our federal update, I will try to keep this as big picture as I can to give you a lay of the land. House leadership, we have a new Speaker of the House. Since our last federal update, House Republicans have elected Mike Johnson from Louisiana to serve as the Speaker. It's going to be interesting to see his approach, especially given he is now facing what former Speaker McCarthy faced as he was ousted around the possibility of a federal government shutdown last time we were all gathered here together, and we are now facing that possibility again on November 17th. This leads me to fiscal year 2024 appropriations. The fiscal year began on October 1, and we were, again, we were facing that government shutdown, but at the last minute, Congress was able to avoid that by passing a continuing resolution or CR to continue funding the government at the previous year's levels. That is set to expire again next week, November 17th. So we're right back to where we were last time we spoke. But the good news is we are prepared as a campus in the event of a shutdown. We have procedures in place that would minimize the impact, as Kelly described in her last update in September, and we've communicated that to campus. The other good news is congressional leaders are looking to pass another CR to extend funding and avoid a shutdown. But there are several challenges that they'll need to address. They are debating how long this next CR should last, whether it will include any policy writers, like supplemental funding for Israel, Ukraine, border security. The House and Senate have drastically different proposals for what the funding levels should be for next fiscal year, so they'll still need to reconcile those major differences. So a lot that they still need to work out. They've discussed CR options, and we've heard various timelines on what that might be. Speaker Johnson has floated a few ideas, including one that would expire on January 17th, which yes, is the date for your next meeting. So we may be back here again discussing the next CR, but we'll see. Bottom line for you all, I just wanted you to know, federal affairs, we're continuing to ensure we're prepared for any potential shutdown and continuing to advocate for the continuation of this important federal funding. In fact, as I said, Kelly is doing this today. She's talking about a new federally funded research center at UNC that has great promise to improve the lives of North Carolinians. So finally, I just wanted to highlight this center. Yes, sorry, do we have?
No, I'm sorry. I was just gonna jump in and just say, thank you so much. This is in board effect, and we're running late on our time, so we might need to just move on.
Move on. Happy to share. Yeah, happy to share details other, another time. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you being here, Roxana. And Mike, we'll do a quick update on development.
Morning. I'll catch us up. This is in the midst of our traditional giving season. The fall is always the busiest time where development is out and about engaging our generous community. So I promised you at every meeting, I'll give you a quick update on fundraising activity for the year. At certain times of the year, we'll have a more robust analysis. We did last time as we looked at the close of the fiscal year. This is not the time to do a deep dive, but I thought I'd share a couple of quick data points, and then I'm going to turn it over for a brief presentation from one of my colleagues, which I'll talk about in just a second. So just quickly, let's get to the numbers. Q1, that ended on September 30th, 67 million down from the previous year, which was the campaign high water mark. I like to show you the five-year plus total, so you can get a sense of, of how we fit in the, in the most recent history. Obviously, those were the major ending years of the campaign that concluded in December of last year. We always look at cash, which is another measurement. This is both cash of outright gifts, but also pledges of, paid pledges of previous commitments as well. So you might ask, okay, well, how, how do you get to these totals? And this slide is not meant to create evaluation across the 26. I keep saying that, 26 different units on campus that do active fundraising. But it is to highlight that our totals are driven by four large units. These are units that have a deep history of fundraising and a large donor base. And so 63% of our totals come from these four units. The question that I continue to ask myself and the Central Development, which we call UDO, University Development Office, is how can we be in more service to those units? Because the more we can do to help them raise money, the more the totals will go up. So why do I show that? Okay, so $64 million is the overall. You can see the five-year high watermark was 137. That was last year. But the average has been about 107 million over the last five years. So we are definitely having a soft quarter. Too soon to be panicked, but always to be aware. But when we look at those four units, you can see some pretty interesting data. UNC Health, which is ongoing a major strategic planning process, having a reasonable year. Arts and Sciences and Keenan Flagler, having a tough fall, and we're working with them to understand what's, what's this data represent? Maybe there are some very active gift conversations that will close in the next quarter, and we'll see a, a big bump. But I'll report to that at our next meeting. And then athletics actually having a very strong year, near their five-year high watermark. So there may be questions about that, but this is the kind of detail analysis I hope to just should give you insight into how we think about our fundraising performance and how we monitor where there might be opportunities for improvement, or certainly opportunities to congratulate success. So that's the totals. I know we're behind, and maybe we can talk offline or if you have questions. But what I want to do is give the remaining five minutes, six minutes of my time to introduce you to one of my colleagues. Over the last two board meetings, I have shared with you UDO organizational chart. We've done some restructuring. We've hired three ABCs. I will propose to you that this is the best leadership team that I've been a part of. I'm just honored and privileged to be working with them every day. And so for the next few meetings, I like to bring a few of my colleagues, so they can share with you a part of the expertise and the part of the work that we do. And so today, we're going to hear from Kavitha Hall, who is our Associate Vice Chancellor for Foundation Relations and Industry Engagement, and she has a few slides to share with you about her team and what she does. Kavitha.
Hi. Thanks for hearing from me today. I know, I think I'm the only thing standing between you and lunch, so I'm going to try and be as efficient as possible. I had the good fortune of meeting Chair Pryor last weekend at the game, and I said, I lead Foundation Relations and Industry Engagement, and he goes, but what do you actually do? I said, give me a couple of days, I'm going to tell you. So here's what we do. And the next slide, it's we're actually responsible for proactively seeking funding from foundations and industry for faculty across campus. So for their research, their teaching, their public service. When you're thinking about philanthropy, you think about NIH, and you think about state entities and government contracts. Fantastic work. It's not the space that we play in. When you think about your Melons and your Chan Zuckerbergs and your industry like BASF, that's our folks. So I report up to Mike. We're centrally located at the university, which actually I think gives us a distinct advantage because we're not a fiscal agent, right? So we don't take money. We don't have an incentive to raise money for ourselves. We're here to be truly of service to the entire university. So in addition to kind of cultivating and stewarding relationships with foundations and industry, we work with faculty across campus, other development officers and deans, and units across campus to make sure that their applications are successfully submitted and stewarded. And that can mean a little bit of a different thing for our team versus development officers. So I always kind of say, I think about development officers as like the football players and the cheerleaders. I think of us very proudly as band geeks. Some of the work we do is a little more technical in nature, and I'm going to tell you about that in that next slide. So here is, can I afford these? Okay, thank you. Here's the dream team. So there's 18 of us. The folks in white are development officers. I should actually be in white up there. Six of us are generalists, so we're dedicated to working across campus. One of those is our Director of Industry Relations. There are five what we call liaison positions. So these are folks that we've partnered with schools across campus who said, we really want fundraisers dedicated to foundations and industry, but we want them dedicated to the school that we, where we sit. So those are our liaison positions. Rite large, we work with about 60 million, 65 million in grants and gifts per year. So I think our return on investment is pretty stellar. If you're a first-year fundraiser, kind of a freshman, new to the university, new to the work, you're charged with bringing in about $1 to $2 million a year and submitting about 12 to 15 applications. If you're a seasoned fundraiser, it's $5 to $8 million, and you're submitting about 45 applications, depending on your portfolio. So 60 to 65 million on average over the past five years in grants and gifts. In addition to our frontline fundraisers, we have Directors of Prospect Research, so that's kind of at the beginning of the pipeline. And then we have a really critical staff around proposal development and stewardship. So back to the, the band geek part. Some of that, that stewardship can mean things like kind of the typical stewardship you think about with donors, but some of it can mean that we never interact with our foundations, but that our reports are submitted on time, our Is are dotted, our Ts are crossed, our faculty are spending down the budgets in the way that we agreed to in the applications, and that they agreed to give us in the award. And we, of course, have a great staff around support operations and special projects. So here are the services of what we do. I've talked a little bit about that. The only things I want to highlight are point number three, facilitation. Again, because we're centrally located, it gives us the distinct advantage of being able to work with the best, best faculty across campus. So foundations and industry don't necessarily care whether faculty out of the School of Medicine or the School of Public Health is solving their problems. They want to know who the best folks are. So we, we're able to have that purview and able to put those folks together for the best applications. And then point number five around liaisoning. So think about any acronym on campus, OSR, OTC, so many roads that we work with lead to Penny Gordon Larson, which we're really grateful, grateful for. Those are the, the folks that we work with to make sure that it's really easy to do business with the university. That's a big point of pride for us. So I always say we cultivate as much internally as we do externally at the institution. So we skip one side. That's cool. Our next slide is just a smattering of our accounts. I always say, if you know one foundation, you know one foundation. They all act very differently. Here are some of the folks we work with pretty regularly, and we've been really successful with across campus. Anything from a national foundation like the Gates Foundation to our friends at the Keenan Trust. They all act very differently. They have different requirements, different standards. And we're charged with working with them regularly. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm also happy to talk offline because I know you all are on time.
Thank you, Kavitha. Does anyone have any questions for, you know? Trustee Lane.
Do you or anyone on your team have any direct interaction with undergraduate students?
Not really direct interaction. We work a lot with faculty who work with undergrads and graduate students.
All right.
Great. Thank you. Anybody else?
I, I just want to quickly thank you, Kavitha. You do an incredible job. This is a, was a big part of the last campaign in terms of the funding that came through those, those sources of funding. And a lot of times we think about philanthropy being private donors only, and, and this is really important work. I know we're ramping up for what comes next. So thanks for, for all you do and bringing me and others on the team in front of these opportunities to raise more money for Carolina. So thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. I think that concludes our business for today, and external relations. So without objection, we'll stand adjourned.
So we'll take a five-minute break and then start. Morning, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the Committee of Strategic Initiatives. Secretary McClure, if you'll call the role. Oh, wait, now before that, we have a statement of ethics. As Chair of this committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government's Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and the appearance of conflicts of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Hearing none. Secretary McClure, if you'll call the role.
Chair Codis.
Here.
Vice Chair Brian. Mrs. Evans. Dr. Jones. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Pryor. Mrs. White. Mr. Brenner. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. So we're fortunate to have a guest here today that I've known for many years. Jenna Robinson is President of the James G. Martin Center for Academic Renewal. I've known Jenna since I joined the Board of Governors in 2013, and I think this may be the first time that she's speaking before either the Board of Governors or a Board of Trustees. So it's, I'm excited that she's here to share her knowledge. She and the Martin Center have been a tremendous resource for us over the years. Now, the Martin Center is a voice for excellence in higher education. The center advocates responsible governance, viewpoint diversity, academic quality, cost-effective education solutions, and innovative market-based reform. Jenna joined the center in 2007 as a campus outreach coordinator and later became the center's Director of Outreach. She now serves as President. She was previously the EA Morris Fellowship Assistant at the John Locke Foundation, where she works in, where she had worked since 2001. Jenna received both her master's degree in political science and her PhD in political science with a concentration in American politics and a minor in methods from Carolina. So she's a double alum. Her work has appeared in numerous national and local media outlets, including Investors Business Daily, Roll Call, and Forbes. She's taught courses herself in American politics at Carolina, Southeastern Baptist Theological Seminary, and Wake Tech. She previously served as a member of the North Carolina Longitudinal Data System Board and the North Carolina Advisory Committee for the U.S. Commission on Civil Rights and the classical liberals in the Carolinas. She currently serves on the Board of Alumni Free Speech Alliance and on the Board of Visitors at Carolina. So welcome, Jenna. We're excited to have you.
Thank you. Thank you, Marty, members of the board, Chancellor Guskowitz. Thank you for having me here today.
for having me here today. It occurs to me that I am actually the person standing between you and lunch. And so I, I will keep it as short as I can. I'm going to talk today about several issues that are in keeping with the initiatives that this board has taken over the last few years. But first, I want to thank you for the work you've already done so far. Thank you for making Chapel Hill the first public university in the nation to adopt the Calvin Report. Thank you for your immediate and principled response to the Supreme Court's recent decision in the Students for Fair Admissions case. And thank you for your leadership in promoting civil discourse and freedom of expression on campus and for expecting excellence in every program and practice at Carolina. Your leadership has brought UNC Chapel Hill closer to fully embodying its motto, Lux Libertas, the light of knowledge and the liberty to pursue it fearlessly. But there is always more work to be done. I want to suggest a few areas for exploration that are in keeping with the initiatives that you have already started. First, I think there's a clear opportunity to improve freshman orientation. I've just realized my PowerPoint is not up. There we go. Okay. In the summer of 2017, the North Carolina Legislature passed House Bill 527, the North Carolina Free Speech Act into law, which you probably already know. The law contains provisions that protect free speech across the UNC system, affirm the importance of campus free speech, and provide for accountability on free expression. One of the provisions requires that the state's public universities, including UNC Chapel Hill, provide instruction on free expression during freshman orientation. According to the law, all constituent institutions of the University of North Carolina shall include in freshman orientation programs a section describing the policies regarding free expression consistent with this article. Those policies have been further codified by the UNC Board of Governors and often reaffirmed by this board. I'm going to quickly paraphrase them now, just as kind of a reminder of how important these principles are. First, the law affirms that the primary function of each constituent institution is the discovery, improvement, transmission, and dissemination of knowledge by means of research, teaching, discussion, and debate. And to fulfill this function, the constituent institution must strive to ensure the fullest degree of intellectual freedom and free expression. The law also states that it's not the proper role of any constituent institution to shield individuals from speech protected by the First Amendment, including without limitation, ideas, and opinions they find unwelcome, disagreeable, or even deeply offensive. The law also includes a provision about institutional neutrality that was strengthened during the most recent legislative session. It insists that any restrictions on time, place, and manner of expression must be content neutral and that they must be clear, published, and provide ample alternative means of expression. It designates that all outdoor campus spaces are traditional public forums. It clarifies that UNC campuses are open to any speaker whom students, student groups, or members of the faculty have invited. And it mandates disciplinary sanctions for anyone who substantially interferes with protected free expression rights of others, including those who engage in hecklers' vetoes. One of the reasons I've read those provisions is because when I present the next piece of evidence, it's going to be clear that UNC students don't know about this law. The evidence of the need for better orientation comes in part from surveys conducted by three UNC professors, Jennifer Larson, Mark McNeely, and Tim Ryan. In their 2020 survey on free expression and civil dialogue, they found that both liberal and conservative students at UNC Chapel Hill worry about how students and faculty will respond to their political views, and students across political perspectives engage in self censorship. They also found that anxieties about expressing political views and self censorship are more prevalent among students who identify as conservative. More evidence of the need for better education on issues of free expression and university free speech policies comes from a 2023 survey from the Foundation for Individual Rights and Expression, which is on the PowerPoint slide. In that survey, FIRE found that UNC students don't know their rights, responsibilities, or UNC's free speech obligations to the public university. Seventy-seven percent of UNC students say that shouting down a speaker to prevent them from speaking on campus is acceptable, at least on rare occasions. Depending on the topic, up to 72% of UNC students think that some speakers should not be allowed to speak on campus. Forty-five percent of UNC Chapel Hill students said that pro-Israeli student groups should not be allowed to register as student organizations and receive student fees. And 42% of UNC Chapel Hill students said that politically conservative student groups should not be allowed to register as a student organization and receive student fees. Only 9% of students said it's extremely clear that the UNC administration supports free speech on campus. And this is despite the fact that UNC Chapel Hill has some of the best free speech policies in the country. The students don't know the policies that this university, this state, and the UNC Board of Governors have enacted to protect their free speech. UNC Chapel Hill is not dedicating adequate time or attention to ensuring that students know these important policies that outline their fundamental rights and the responsibilities that go with them. In 2021, the Martin Center requested freshman orientation materials from all UNC constituent institutions to see how they had responded to the campus free speech bill. We found that five schools, including UNC Chapel Hill, had provided only very brief nod to free speech and orientation materials. Nine schools provided a somewhat more substantive free speech section during orientation, but still not comprehensive. And two schools didn't respond at all. This is the single slide that UNC Chapel Hill uses to introduce free speech to incoming students. As you can see, it does little to orient them to UNC's free speech policies or practices. Teaching students about free expression during freshman orientation is an ideal opportunity to correct misconceptions before students come to campus and to prepare them for an experience of courageous conversations, freedom of expression, conscience, and participation in the life of the campus community. In turn, these experiences will prepare students for deep participation in our pluralistic democratic republic as informed and engaged citizens. Providing students with robust instruction on free expression should be a key part of UNC's service to students and the state of North Carolina. Carolina has an opportunity to develop a model program that could later be implemented by other UNC institutions. But I believe that the problem is, yes.
I could stump you there, Jennifer.
Yes, absolutely.
What you hear printing in the background is a copy of the resolution that we're not going to vote on today or tomorrow, but that we're going to introduce and have in board effect that would attempt to bring us into compliance with House Bill 527 and enhance the first year orientation regarding free speech. So that will be handed around as well as a couple of other ones that deal with this, but they're not going to be voted on today.
Okay, thank you. This brings me to my next topic, because I think free speech and students' lack of knowledge on free speech is part of a bigger issue, bigger than just free speech or freshman orientation. And the real problem is that students lack knowledge about civics generally. UNC, with its new School of Civic Life and Leadership, has plans to expose students to civil discourse, debate, and communication. I believe it should also explore ways to incorporate civic knowledge. Civic knowledge among college graduates is abysmally low. In 2019, a survey by the American Council of Trustees and Alumni, the one that Heather just alluded to, found that among the surveyed college graduates, 70% incorrectly thought that Thomas Jefferson was the father of the Constitution, with only 18% correctly identifying James Madison. Thirty-nine percent believed that the president has constitutional authority to declare war, while 16% thought that the late Justice Antonin Scalia was the current Chief Justice of the Supreme Court. Over half did not know the term lengths of members of Congress, and 12% believed that Congresswoman Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez was the author of the New Deal. According to a 2018 survey conducted by the Woodrow Wilson National Fellowship Foundation, found that only one in three Americans would be able to pass the US citizenship test. And a different poll by the Annenberg Public Policy Center also revealed general civic illiteracy. But it also hinted at something else, which is in my next slide. And that's the relationship between lack of civic knowledge and political polarization. As you can see in the slide, students, sorry, not students, survey respondents assumed that the court was much more split than it actually is. And you see this over and over, that people come to expect and demonize people on the other side because they don't have the knowledge and they don't understand. And this is a problem that education can solve. Another analysis from the Annenberg Public Policy Center found that reporting, having taken a civics class, continues to be associated with correct answers to civic knowledge questions, including knowledge of the three branches, knowledge of First Amendment rights, the meaning of a 5-4 Supreme Court decision, the Supreme Court having the final stay on the constitutionality of a president's actions, and knowing that Facebook is not covered by the First Amendment. So education on this issue works. But right now, only a third of those with at least some college education said they have taken a college course that focused on the US system of government and the Constitution. At UNC, with its large course catalog and variety of options, that proportion may be lower. Based on your past efforts to accelerate the School of Civic Life and Leadership, to adopt a civility pledge, and to support the program for public discourse, I know that this board is dedicated to improving civic education for all UNC students. I believe that education for citizenship should go beyond freshman orientation into the general education curriculum. Preparing students for civic life should be a cornerstone of university education. This ideal is baked into UNC already. UNC describes ideas and action as a program that helps students develop the habits of mind and skills that will prepare students to contribute in a fast-changing world as a citizen, a scholar, community member, and a leader. But right now, there's no guarantee that students will take a course that prepares them for participation in American society, our unique, pluralistic, democratic republic. That's because ideas and action doesn't require a civics course. Students may take a course on civics or US history as part of one of the focus capacities, but those courses are just too among a wide array of topics. Even UNC history majors aren't required to take a course in US government. At the same time, ideas and action does mandate that students take a course on power, difference, and inequality. The ideas promulgated in many of the courses that count toward this requirement are divisive and unproductive, as I know that Heather McDonald has catalogued in her many works and I believe spoke about last night. Moreover, these courses are asking students to critique society and government before first understanding them. To be clear, I have no problem with students choosing these courses on their own. But they should not be mandated by the university's general education curriculum, especially in the absence of courses that could help give students the necessary context and background information to inform their criticisms. The American Council of Trustees and Alumni recommends that all universities require a course in civics or American history as part of their general education programs. They define this as a survey course in either US government or history with enough chronological and topical breadth to expose students to the sweep of American history and institutions. Narrow niche courses should not be included in the requirement. Nor should be courses that focus only on a limited chronological period or a specific state or region. The North Carolina General Assembly is already considering ways to improve civic education across the UNC system. Specifically, the NC House passed House Bill 96 during the most recent session. It was not taken up by the Senate. But the provisions of that bill are to make it a condition of graduation for all students to complete at least three credit hours of instruction in American history or American government. And the bill specifies various readings that a student would have to complete during the course. On April 28, 2021, South Carolina adopted a similar bill, the Reinforcing College Education on America's Constitutional Heritage Act, the REACH Act. The South Carolina REACH Act updated a previous 100-year-old South Carolina law, and nationally, at least eight states have similar laws: Texas, Nevada, Wyoming, Georgia, Utah, Arkansas, and Missouri. The various state laws vary in the length of instruction required. Students are hungry for civic knowledge, engagement, and discussion across party lines. But right now, they have a harder time finding those things than they should, at least in part, because when they go to sign up for courses, this is not something that is mandated. And they can't really make the decisions we would like them to be able to make based on the information that they've given. It brings me to my next topic, that students can't really tell what they're signing up for when they are going to sign up for courses. And to correct that problem, I believe that additional academic transparency is needed so that students can seek out courses that interest them and that students should have the information available to do so. One of the simplest ways to practice academic transparency, sorry, is to make syllabi publicly accessible by posting them online before registration for classes begins. Doing so serves multiple purposes. Firstly, it allows students to make more informed decisions about what classes they could take. A history course that has a list of primary documents for reading is vastly different from a history course with contemporary criticism of those documents. And having a syllabi would allow a student to know which is which. Right now, the only thing available to students are a course number and course description. These aren't always as informative as they should be. Let me use an example from political science to illustrate. When I was a grad student here, I taught Poly 100, which at the time was called Intro to American Politics. It included the American founding, checks and balances, federalism, civil rights, civil liberties, and important Supreme Court cases, parties, and elections, and lots of primary documents. Very straightforward. Now, Poly 100 is called in the UNC course catalog, "American Democracy in Changing Times." And here's the description from that same catalog. Why do Americans love democracy but hate politics? Why are there only two political parties? Why do voters hate yet respond to negative campaigning? This course will introduce students to politics in the United States, addressing these and many more questions about how American democracy works. Honors version available. I have no idea whether it has the same course content. This description gives me very little idea of the time period it covers, the documents students must read, or much else that helps me to make a decision. Is this the course where a student might encounter the US Constitution? From the description, I have no idea. English 124 is no better. It's called Contemporary Literature in the course catalog, and the description is, fulfills a major core requirement, the literature of the present generation. That's it. No time period specified, no list of authors, no specification as to whether students will read prose, poetry, or graphic novels. In short, nothing to help a student decide whether the course is worth taking. But if syllabi are posted online along with required readings, then that information would be easily found out. Knowing the required reading ahead of time will allow conscientious students to get the most out of their time in college. A recent article in Inside Higher Ed pointed out that making syllabi online only on complicated, password-protected platforms creates an unnecessary barrier between students and their educational content. There are other benefits to posting syllabi online. Doing so can aid in pedagogical research and information sharing, expose a professor's deviation from normal expectations or acceptable academic standards, and make comparisons between classes at different universities easier for the determination of transfer credits. The idea is a popular one. In 2009, the Martin Center surveyed students, faculty, and administrators about their opinions on syllabus transparency. We found that 79.6% of students said that universities should require professors to post syllabi. 64% of student respondents say they have shopped for a course where they sign up for more than they need and then look around and pick the best ones. 20% of students say they dropped a course because it was so different from their expectations, based on the course catalog. And 61% of students said that in their college career, they've been disappointed because a course wasn't what they expected. 65% of faculty and administrator respondents agreed with the proposal that college and universities should require professors to post detailed course descriptions for students before, or sorry, during their course registration period. And more than half of faculty and administrators thought that public universities should make such information available to the public as well as students. Hosting syllabi online is beneficial as well as achievable. Fayetteville State University took this step in 2009. At FSU, each academic department has a link called syllabi that lists each course's complete syllabus. Dr. John Young, who was an FSU provost at the time, explained in an interview, "We're supported by the..." "We're supported by the taxpayers of North Carolina. People have a right to see what we're doing." He added that the policy helps faculty to know there's another, a public audience. And many professors already post their syllabi online voluntarily. Take a look at any departmental website, and you'll find quite a few old syllabi. Academic transparency, freshman orientation, and civics education are places where UNC has a chance to be a model, as it has already done on institutional neutrality, free expression, and equal opportunity. This board's actions drive policy not only for Carolina students but for students across the UNC system. Thank you once again for your leadership. And with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you. You know, I think it's important for us to always remember, like we talked about earlier, the people of the state have an interest in this university because it's our public flagship university. And the Martin Center represents a lot of voices out there that are seeking minor tweaks to our university. And I think the resolutions we have, again, we're not going to vote on them today, fall in the categories of freedom of speech, academic transparency, and then not a change to civics education, but a survey of the knowledge of our students' civics education. So, those will be part of your Board Effect package now, and we have printed copies. Again, we're not going to vote on them today or tomorrow. Have plenty of time to discuss this and think it through. But those would represent modifications that I think the Martin Center and Jenna Field are worthy fixes for a couple of our minor problems. So with that, Ron?
Jenna, I just wanted to thank you, but it's helpful to go through some practical things. I've always said, even when you put in good policies, that creates the opportunity for free and robust speech and good civil dialogue. You actually have to get in often to more, you know, some real particulars to actually help see that happen on campus. I appreciate you outlining some ideas for us to sort of make those things move from opportunity to reality on campus. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't have a question of the speaker, but I was wondering, given the finite resources, going back to that first survey, do we have clear criteria for who is allowed to be a student organization? And what those fees are?
Sorry, could you clarify that a bit?
Well, the survey said 40-some percent didn't think a conservative group or a liberal group or whatever group should be a student organization and receive fees. And I was wondering if we had a clear policy criteria for said organizations.
So, the board passed a resolution, I think last year, that required neutrality and allocation of funds to various student groups. I think some of the groups you're talking about range from maybe $1,300 to $9,000 worth of student fee funding that comes from student fees. But someone else may have a more exact answer on that.
You could throw us clues.
Either Amy Johnson or Becky Mangini, I'd probably.
Yeah, I'm going to ask Amy to come up, but let me just say, I think you're asking about how one decides what can be a student organization. And I think we have a really good history there. There are AAUP guidelines that say the only challenge is you have to find a sponsor. And we've actually helped student organizations do that in the past, but I'm going to let Amy give a more fulsome answer about what that process is. But I think it's been very, it's been very fair as far as I can tell. Now, the allocation of funds is done by student government, but I'll let you.
I wanted to say one thing really quickly. I have no problems with the way UNC is doing it. I think UNC is doing a right job. I think the problem is that students don't know how those decisions are made, and that it is open to viewpoint neutral, you know, or to student groups regardless of their viewpoint.
Just very briefly, we have approximately, it changes year to year, but 800 different recognized and registered student clubs and organizations. That funding, the bar to become a recognized student organization is relatively low. As the provost indicated, you have to have a university advisor, you have to have a constitution, you have to attend some basic training in terms of learning how to operate and manage funding. But aside from that, it's relatively easy to become a student organization. We do trainings throughout the year to advise them how to do that. And indeed, our university student government does administer and make determinations regarding the fee allocations for those student organizations. Let me know if there's.
I was going to ask you to, let me ask follow-up, Chairman Cudess.
Of course.
Just to be clear, the one requirement in order to, under the AAUP guidelines, is you have to find a sponsor. And are there any examples of groups that have, that we would not want or would not allow to form a student organization, or just as long as they can find a sponsor, it's okay?
As long as they can find a sponsor, and again, you know, to meet the basic requirements so that they understand how to operate funding, no. One of the things that you may understand is from a student development perspective, we want as many different registered student organizations. These are important resources that assist with retention and academic success and other things. So, we intentionally set that bar very low so that we can welcome as many students who want to form organizations as possible.
And so, whether or not some of us may find their mission offensive is irrelevant.
I wouldn't say irrelevant, but again, recognizing that we want the breadth of student organizations. If those organizations somehow engage in activity that isn't permitted by the university, we have other places to respond to that. But in terms of recognizing them initially, the bar is intentionally low.
This probably isn't the place for it, but I'd love to get a little finer point on that second point, that there may be some groups that you wouldn't bless and kind of what the gradations of gray are there. It doesn't need to be now.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Glad to speak to it whenever.
Trustee Mike?
And Amy, survey.
Oh.
So, I think, and I'm just going to generalize, I think you said like around 800, 700 student organizations. So, there's an application process?
Of a sort.
Right.
Yes, it's pretty minimal.
So, in that process, how many would you say just ballpark or deny? How many applicants do you have?
I was going to say, we typically are not in the business of denying them. If we had a student who, or if we had a student organization that came, for example, and they didn't have an advisor framed, we would work with them to try to help them find an advisor. So, to my knowledge, we don't actively deny student organizations from that initial bar of becoming registered. But I don't have those specific numbers. I could share them with you if we've turned somebody down, but.
And I believe Chair Pryor has got some time set aside in university affairs for us to have a slight discussion on this and rules regarding some of these issues. So, I think we'll have time to cover it there. Were there any other questions from Ms. Robinson?
Yes. So, Jenna, thank you for being here. Every time we talk or you speak, I have a chance to learn something from you, so I appreciate it. Regarding the FIRE survey, the 2023 FIRE survey, I think it's just important to recognize, we've looked at that pretty closely. It was 259 respondents, which represents about 1% of our undergraduate, 20,000-plus undergraduates of Carolina. So, I just, I think we have to be careful of overinterpreting some of that with respect to a survey with 1% response rate. But the points you're making, I take, but I don't know that it really represents the 20,000-plus undergraduates of Carolina.
I think that's certainly fair, and I think, but I think that the free expression and civil dialogue survey that was done here by UNC professors enforces some of the same ideas.
And the resolution in here really doesn't tie to the FIRE survey. It's more compliance with our free speech training requirements. Going beyond a slide and going to maybe, you know, roughly an hour of instruction, because it's so important for our students to understand that, understand these lines. We're sitting here a day, and we're not aware of which lines are which yet. So, I think there's need for training at all levels. Provost Clemens, did you have any additional thoughts on Ms. Robinson's presentation or the ability for the university to to survey students regarding civic education?
Yeah, I think, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, or the additional academic transparency.
Yeah, I think we've, I'll just say, some of the information there is old. We have a class features tool that was implemented during the pandemic to disseminate more information about a class than just the simple one-line description. It does require faculty participate, so the participation rate's not 100%. That was done both to know the format of classes, because at that time, you didn't know if you were getting into a hybrid online situation. It does not include the entire syllabus. That's something we could discuss, their issues, legal issues, and other issues. In general, we were praised for our more-than-average transparency in the chronicle, so I think we have taken these steps. So, I agree in principle with everything she said about transparency. In terms of surveys, there are already a number of national surveys. I think we try not to do too many surveys on campus, but I think that's something we could consider surveying for civics knowledge along with maybe other things that we want to know in our students. So, in principle, all those sound like reasonable ideas. We'd have to discuss implementation.
So, why don't we do this in the interest of minimizing resolutions? If you could coordinate with the Martin Center or whomever the chancellor would want to designate to review those further, then we could modify or craft the resolutions as needed for January or maybe eliminate the need for them.
Yeah, let me take these under advisement. Would like to discuss it with faculty and of course with legal to make sure that we have some plan, and maybe we'll come back to you with something that we could present as responsive to the presentation we saw.
Yeah, and again, encourage dialogue with Ms. Robinson as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
So, I think that concludes our business today. Without objection, we'll stand adjourned for lunch. And Chair Pryor, when do you want everyone back in?
Sometime around 1:00.
Okay, sometime around 1:00.
Seeing none. Chris, will you please call the roll?
Sure. Chair Jones?
Here.
Vice Chair Evans?
Yeah.
Mr. Ballantyne?
Mr. Bolick?
Here.
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mr. Everett?
Here.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Pryor? Mr. Turner? Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you. Good thing I've got glasses on. Put my eyeball out on this microphone. Before we begin, I would like to speak to two issues that are of importance, I think, to the Carolina community. We are a community of scholars. And one of our societal expectations and responsibilities, as we heard from Ms. McDonald earlier today, is the elevation, not diminution, of discourse on a given subject. I am a staunch believer in the freedoms of speech, inquiry, and conscience. I'm also a staunch believer in institutional neutrality and the ideal of the university being a forum for all points of view to be heard in a respectful manner. Free speech, however, does have its limits. Inciting violence is beyond the pale, and encouraging people to conceal their identity while attending a protest is counter to both university policy and North Carolina law. Regardless of the passions a given subject may invoke, appealing to violence as a means to attain a political goal is never justified, and these types of behaviors have no place on our campus. Secondly, the humanities are Carolina's heart and soul. As we highlighted in January, this board recognizes the importance of the humanities and the creation of a Carolina graduate. Our new School of Civic Life and Leadership is based upon the humanities and the timeless principles of open and respectful debate. The reinstatement of distinguished professorships and the humanities should be a rallying point for the entire Carolina community. Pursuing this goal, however, with calls of either moral outrage or the use of demeaning tropes will likely be both unsuccessful and counterproductive. To win this debate, we must ask and answer hard questions. Why has society at large devalued the humanities, and what changes should we make to alter this perception? Only after fully contemplating these questions can we use this as an opportunity to re-instill an appreciation of the overall value and importance of the humanities in higher education. Thank you. With that, I would like to move to approve the minutes from our September 27th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion or debate? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Seeing none, the minutes are approved. The second item on our agenda is the approval of revised faculty salary ranges for the Eshelman School of Pharmacy and the UNC School of Nursing. Vice Chancellor Mangini, would you like to?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. It's a pleasure to be before you once again today. Much like in past months, I have a relatively light agenda. We have two sets of faculty ranges. As Chair Jones said, the first is for the Eshelman School of Pharmacy, and the second is for the School of Nursing. The Eshelman School of Pharmacy has not updated their faculty ranges since 2019, and this update is intended to better clarify the distinctions between instructors, research assistant professors, and assistant professors. The numbers, as you'll note in the materials provided to you in advance, have not moved that much, but by putting boundaries on the numbers based on the appointment type, the school can better manage their personnel. The numbers were derived from the American Association of Colleges of Pharmacy, with the 80th percentile as the targeted midpoint. These numbers and the spread are all projected in alignment with the UNC system rules on faculty salary structures. Likewise, the School of Nursing has made minor adjustments to their ranges. And they've done this, these are a late add to the agenda in part because, as you all know, in the budget that just passed, there were some additional salary adjustment funds provided for nursing faculty, such that we can put these in play all in one fell swoop. They had their numbers ready. They are originally going to come to you at the January meeting. They've made some adjustments that really allow these new numbers to fit within the bounds. These numbers also are derived from the American Association of Colleges of Nursing, using data segmented, really focused on those institutions with high research intensity, and also universities with academic medical centers. The 75th percentile is the benchmark for the School of Nursing. And like with the School of Pharmacy, the ranges and the spread are all in alignment with the UNC system rules and faculty salary structures. I'm happy to take any questions if you have them, though I believe these are relatively straightforward, and I welcome your approval.
Are there any questions or concerns for Vice Chancellor Mangini? Seeing none, may I get a, may I have a motion?
Please.
All in favor? Any opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, the motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Both of these items will be placed on the consent agenda for tomorrow's full board schedule. Next, we are going to hear from the Chair of the Faculty, Beth Maraca. Beth, thank you for being here.
Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me back. I'm very pleased to be here this afternoon. So, there's a lot of heartbreak in the world right now, and I want to start my remarks today on a more inspirational note. During fall break, which was last month, I participated in the Tarheel Bus Tour. I was traveling on the West Bus, which we affectionately called the Best Bus. There was also an East Bus, which was fine, I'm sure as well. With about 40 Carolina faculty and senior administrators, or as I like to think of them now, are or as I like to think about of them now are my new best friends. But I should also note that I shared some of these reflections at our Faculty Council meeting on Friday. So if you attended that meeting or if you're watching it on the live stream, I apologize for repeating myself, which my adult children tell me that I do periodically, but that these experiences on the bus were so profoundly moving and transformative and so illustrious of the impact that this university has on the state that I wanted to share it with you as well. So as we did make our way west, we made 10 stops in three days. Carolina's extensive reach was evident. We saw so many examples of Carolina alumni who graduate and then go back to their communities to serve. One example was the Mayor of Canton, Zeb Smathers, who's a graduate of UNC's Law School and is practicing law from the same building that was the General Store that his parents, his grandparents established and ran. Now the mayor, he is contending with invigorating the economy of Canton after the local paper mill, which was also the town's major employer, closed this May after 115 years of operation. So leaders in Canton, including Mayor Smathers, are working with NC Growth, which is a partner of the Kenan Institute for Private Enterprise and the North Carolina Collaborative, which I'm sure you're familiar with, to create economic development plans and to help the community recover. On the other end of the spectrum, we met with some future Tarheels, prospective, bright, eager high school students. We stopped in Polk County High School. I think the East Bus also stopped in a high school. Our school had a working farm with goats and cows and chickens and tractors. And these students, their aspirations of attending UNC Chapel Hill may be realized due to the efforts of the Carolina Advising Corps, which is embedded in communities across the state. And it was so inspiring to talk to some of these young people who had dreams and hopes of attending Carolina and who were so articulate and so focused in their ambitions. I was really, really impressed. We also stopped in Old Fort, where UNC archaeologists and archivists are working with the Kataba Vale Collaborative, which is a partnership of community organizations, the U.S. Forest Service and the State Park Service, that's redefining outdoor recreation by entwining history, place-based storytelling and reflection in a way that I had definitely never seen before. It was so inspiring. And finally, when we were in Charlotte, visiting with a nonprofit organization that provides youth with employment opportunities and leadership skills that's part of the Carolina Across 100 Initiative, one of the staff members made a comment that has stuck with me, and she said, quote, "There are people who may never travel to Chapel Hill, who will never set foot on UNC's campus, but who have been touched by and whose lives have been changed by Carolina." So I tried to bring that back with me and share that with people, again, just to show this profound impact that this university has. So these stories and the other connections and the connections that I made with my own colleagues on the bus are just priceless reminders of the important impact we have and the work that we do and how much we learn. We as faculty learn from our citizens. I want to really emphasize that that experience, that impact is bidirectional. I probably learned as much as I, kind of like P score, I learned as much as I conveyed. And I also want to thank, on the West Bus, we were joined by trustees Patel and Brian in Charlotte and also Chair Pryor in Asheville, and I think that some trustees also joined people on the East Bus as well, and the chancellor was on both buses. And I'm, I have to, I have to disclose that he also square danced in Nashville, and I think it, I think it's actually on video somewhere. I think you saw that, Chair Pryor, right?
Do you have video of that?
Somebody does, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna track it down. And I was very glad to hear, I was watching on live stream this morning sessions, and I was very glad to hear from Amy McConkey that legislators are also aware of the bus tour and the impact that it has. That's really, I'm really glad to hear that. And so I just also want to just put out a gigantic shout out to Lynn Blanchard and the Carolina Center for Public Service and all of the folks who put together the bus tour. I can't even imagine the logistics behind that, and everything went seamlessly, even the weather. So I don't know how you managed that, but it was very, and there are several people I know in the room who were on either the East or the West Bus. So that's the inspiration, but I also do want to acknowledge that our faculty, just like people everywhere, have been bearing witness to the horrific destruction, violence and loss in the Middle East and just the almost unimaginable escalating humanitarian crisis. These events have affected many members of our campus community and our faculty, some faculty, some of us have a deep affinity for and/or ties to the region, including having family members who are either missing or currently missing or in danger. We know that this this complex, this conflict is complex, historically rooted, and we're not going to resolve it today or tomorrow or in coming weeks, but we also can't ignore it nor the impact that it is having on our campus community. At Carolina, like other institutions of higher education, we've been roiled by reactions to the conflict, reactions to violence in Israel and Gaza. And as an institution and as individual faculty members, our principles are being tested, and we're trying to balance, and I've been hearing that, watching this morning and hearing some of the conversations, as we try to balance that right and responsibilities of free expression and freedom of speech, our institutional neutrality and our responsibilities to ensure the physical and psychological safety of our students and our colleagues. So over the past weeks, we as faculty have been reflecting on our role as faculty and members of this community about how we can best serve in times of turmoil. And at the Faculty Council meeting on Friday, I mentioned an op-ed article that was published on October 30th, I believe, in the New York Times. The authors are both deans of Schools of Public Policy and they're good friends and former colleagues. One's Palestinian and one is Israeli. And in that article, they implore universities not to pull back from the discourse, and that they say that by pulling back and retreating into our ivory towers, we will result in the discourse becoming even more polarized and more toxic. They also note that this, that there's no better place for these discussions than a university campus, but that sponsoring this kind of discussion and debate takes courage. And I want to let you know that I've actually witnessed that courage by our faculty here on our campus. Within days of the demonstration that took place on campus, October 12th, Faculty for the Center for Middle East and Islamic Studies organized an educational panel on the history of the conflict in Gaza that was attended by over 200 people and was respectful and engaged participation. And this past Monday, the Program for Public Discourse, the UNC Center for Middle East and Islamic Studies and the Carolina Center for Jewish Studies co-sponsored an event called "The War in Gaza: A Discussion of the Origin, Strategies and Ethics." And these are just two of the examples of our faculty doing what we do best, teaching, facilitating learning opportunities and contributing our scholarship and expertise in venues where we can model respectful dialogue. As I know our chancellor likes to say, "We're built for this, and this is what we do." I wanted to let you know also that faculty are also reaching out and checking in on our students, and especially those who may be at risk of feeling marginalized or in fear at this time. And all of these efforts are occurring as we faculty are navigating our own often painful reactions to these unfolding events. So beyond that, there are also a few other issues I wanted to let you know about that the faculty and the faculty governance have in our sights, and we'll be addressing in the upcoming weeks, and I'm sure that the chancellor and provost will also be making remarks in these areas. First, we're concerned and continue to seek clarification about the scope and the implications of the changes and to the criteria that only STEM fields will be eligible moving forward for our state matching funds for the Endowed Trust for distinguished professorships. And I know there's been a lot of conversation, and Chair Jones has mentioned his concern as well. And I do also understand that the Board of, at the Board of Governors level, there's been discussion about more broadly defining what fits in that definition of STEM. Still, we remain concerned about the exclusion of non-STEM fields from this opportunity, especially in the humanities. And I've got to also say, as a social scientist, the social sciences. We know, and it's been stated, and actually the speaker this morning stated on several occasions that the arts and the humanities are essential to our democracy, the preservation of our history and heritage, and they just help us make sense of a complex world and who we are as individuals and as a society. We also know the interdisciplinary perspectives, including the social sciences, are necessary for addressing the complex and multifaceted issues that society faces. We need look no further than the pandemic, where before we had scientific vaccines or treatments and even afterwards, it was really important to understand the history of pandemics, the history of mistrust of medicine and vaccines, how people, what cognitive heuristics people make when they're assessing risk, the economic impacts. All of those things were intertwined for us to understand and know how to move forward in a situation that was so complex. And I'll point out that our own legislature has recognized the importance of humanities and interdisciplinary perspectives by mandating and supporting the new School of Civic Life, Civic Life and Leadership at UNC. And if you look at the list of the inaugural faculty, they represent a broad range of humanities, social sciences, including philosophy, music, history, I've got my list here, political science, psychology and neuroscience. And I want to say that we do appreciate the support that we've received from BOT members so far in really uplifting and supporting the role of of the humanities and social sciences in academic life. We also seek clarification about the legislative mandate to change accreditors with each accreditation cycle, as we're concerned as faculty about the larger implications in terms of workload, the resources that will be required for faculty, staff and administrators to make these changes without a clear sense of what the benefit of making those changes will be. And speaking of workload, I wanted to let you know that the Faculty Workload Policy Committee has been working diligently the past few weeks under a very, very ambitious timeline to draft the content and provisions for assessing faculty workload that accurately reflects the myriad of things that we as faculty do. We have completed our first round of writing and revisions this week, and we're really enthusiastic, despite the time crunch, to have this opportunity to contribute to crafting a policy to assess our workload in a way that really showcases the very diverse ways in which we, you know, contribute our expertise that go beyond classroom teaching. So, you know, our our research, our mentoring, our clinical service, our artistic service, et cetera. These are all part of what we do as faculty, and I hope that with these new policies, we'll be able to assess them and measure them more completely and more accurately. So I want to be mindful of time. I know you have a full agenda, so those were the items that I had for you today. Happy to answer any questions, and I'm also happy for your suggestions about the best ways to get information to the Board of Trustees and the best way for you to get information to us in faculty governance. So I thank you for your time. Do you want me to stay up?
I'm sure. Thank you for being here, and I really appreciate the the frequency of our discussions about different issues and the working relationship that I think you and I are, have developed and are continuing to to develop. Are there any questions for Dr. Maraca? Trustee Valentine?
Who, who was invited as faculty to go on the on the bus tour and have 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 your colleagues raise their hand to do it next time?
Oh, yeah, I was just, I was just joking that I've become kind of evangelical about the bus tour. I've been telling everyone. And I've been on the faculty for 15 years, and I actually do lots of research around this state, so I wasn't even sure that I, you know, that I should have a seat on the bus. But there's an application process that's well-publicized. You fill out an application, basically kind of say why you think this will contribute to kind of your work and your knowledge and your effectiveness in your role. And we, we had two buses this year, so I think, I can't remember, Kevin, was it about 80, 75 or 80 people to get all together? Yeah, so I, it's, it's open to to a broad range of faculty, and I think, you know, that, that, you know, it was paused for a while. And so, and then it paused again during the pandemic, so I think that, you know, now that it's back up again, I think that there'll be, there's a lot of interest.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you again. Our next item is to hear from the Chair of the Employee Forum, from Katie Musgrove, Ms. Musgrove?
All right, good afternoon. Thank you, Chair Jones and esteemed board members for inviting me to speak today. Really appreciate being with you again. I bring you greetings from the Employee Forum and the members of the over 9,000 staff here at UNC Chapel Hill. So what have we been up to since we last spoke in July? As I mentioned during my previous remarks, we recently wrapped up our annual report highlighting the Employee Forum's various accomplishments in the 2022-23 academic year. It took us a little while longer than normal to finalize this report, given the chaotic start to the semester, but we were finally able to forward the report to you all for your consideration. I'll keep my remarks fairly brief, as I think the report does a better job of highlighting our work than I can do in just a few minutes before you today. Here are just a few key themes for staff and from the forum this past year and moving forward. I feel like a little bit of a broken record at this point, but staff recruitment and retention challenges continue to plague our campus. As of yesterday, there are 195 active postings for permanent and temporary staff on our job boards right now. That's 195 vacant positions where existing staff across campus are having to pick up the slack and fulfill those duties, which is unsustainable and inevitably leads to burnout if the positions aren't filled quickly. Not only does this impact existing staff and faculty, but ultimately it affects our students and our ability to fulfill our mission of research, teaching and service. Their experiences suffer because departments can't and units can't provide the same level of experience or service when they are short-staffed, leading to a diminished educational experience for our cherished students. In addition, 51 of those 195 are research staff vacancies. I've talked to this board previously about chronic vacancies in our housekeeping department, but the staggering numbers of research vacancies is equally troubling. These critical vacancies will hinder our campus's $1.2 billion annual research mission, which impacts rankings, faculty recruitment efforts and our innovation advancements as a whole. Similar causes are at hand, given we can't be as competitive with private industry when it comes to pay and benefits working within the various state employment bureaucracies. While we can't change many of those bureaucracies, we can and must do everything in our power to be as efficient as possible within that system. Shortening the lengthy time it takes to fill these key positions is one way where we can stay competitive. Delays in our hiring process have led to many failed searches across campus when top candidates take jobs elsewhere. We have to act quickly if we want to snag the best and the brightest in this tight job market. Beyond creating a more efficient hiring process, we should also be leveraging some creative incentives to attract the most qualified applicants in a competitive job market. One area I think we can get creative is the affordable housing space, an area of focus for the Employee Forum this year. UNC Chapel Hill staff are often priced out of the housing market in Chapel Hill, meaning they have to commute long distances to and from work. I myself and one of them commuting 40 minutes one way from my home in Burlington. Vice Chancellor Knufman visited with the forum last week and presented some results from the U3 Affordable Housing Study commissioned by the university last year. Based on that data, at current prices, 80% of UNC Chapel Hill faculty and staff would be unable to affordably purchase a home in Chapel Hill, Carboro and the immediate area based on university salary alone. How can we hope to retain talented staff and even faculty when they can't afford to set up roots in our community? While this is a nationwide issue and it can't be solved overnight, this is an area where some of our UNC system schools are taking steps forward. A few of my fellow Employee Forum delegates and I recently had the honor to represent UNC Chapel Hill staff at the UNC System Staff Assembly two-day meeting that was held in UNC Wilmington in late October. As a recap, it is here that staff As a recap, it is here that staff from all 17 UNC system institutions come together to advocate on behalf of the over 34,000 staff across the UNC system. Other system schools are also struggling with affordable housing in their areas. For staff in particular, often don't have enough, don't make enough off a state employee salary to afford to live in the cities and towns where our universities are located. Appalachian State is reporting that their institution has already begun building 124 affordable housing units for staff, but their completion is over a year out. Western Carolina University is going into a partnership with Dogwood Trusts to build affordable housing in their area, but it will be open to outside constituents as well as university employees. Finally, UNC Wilmington is in the approval process to request 300 affordable housing units be built for employees on 11 acres of university-owned land. This is all early stages, and I look forward to learning more from my staff colleagues at other UNC system schools as they progress in their affordable housing efforts. I hope to work with Chancellor Guskowitz and his leadership team, as well as you all, as we move forward on finding creative affordable housing solutions for UNC Chapel Hill employees as well. As we learn more from the U3 studies and talk to similarly situated institutions in North Carolina and elsewhere, it is my hope that we too can make progress on this critical issue. Another complex issue the Employee Forum turned to in recent months was the conversation around generative AI. When Provost Clemens announced a faculty-driven committee over the summer to look at developing guidance for faculty and student use of this emerging technology, the Employee Forum suggested that the group also take a look at staff guidance as well. Staff will undoubtedly be using or be interacting with this technology in their various administrative roles, and we wanted to be sure that they had some guidance on how to effectively and safely use this technology. The provost agreed and allowed a staff subcommittee to form, which, with the help of our operational excellence, worked over the course of about eight weeks to get staff generative AI guidance off the ground. It was great to be involved with this process, and frankly, it's only the beginning, given how rapidly the landscape is changing in the generative AI space. Staff are thinking about this and other future-driven initiatives in the work we do on campus and are excited about the future, what the future holds for our dynamic workforce. Another focus for the Employee Forum in the coming year are the Employee Forum's professional development grants managed by our Education and Career Development Committee. This past year, we awarded over $11,000 in grants to 33 recipients with over 65 people applying. Professional development is a constant need on our campus to retain our talented staff, so we are always looking for ways to grow our efforts in this area. While the Employee Forum is unfortunately still operating under our COVID-area budget cuts with limited funds to grow, we've made this a budget priority and have cut other areas of spending to enable an increase in this space. We plan to award $20,000 worth of professional development grants this year just to meet the demand we've seen over the past few years. We are doing our small part in the wider effort to enable career growth for staff, but more still needs done to develop career pathways for employees on campus, enabling promotion and growth without having to leave the university. Last but not least, I wanted to highlight our upcoming Carolina Blood Drive, which is scheduled for Thursday, December 7, 2023, in Fetter Hall from 7:30 to 2:30. We collected almost 38,000 units since the drives began in 1989, and we hope you will consider joining UNC staff, faculty and students as we bleed Carolina blue together for a good cause. Thank you for your time, and I'm glad to answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Ms. Musgrove. Are there any questions? Trustee Curtis?
I think the affordable housing effort is a really smart one, and that's something that the university can maybe partner with the town of Chapel Hill or do public-private partnership. Look at, you know, possibly using that to stabilize some different communities as well or take some land that's being underutilized now. I'd be happy, if it wasn't something covered under this committee, I'd be happy to throw that in strategic initiatives.
Sounds like a good plan.
Thank you, Jesse Kottis.
Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. Have you looked at the Stanford University approach where they own the land and they allow professors and I assume staff too, to purchase homes for the home value, not the land value?
I have not personally, but I know that Chancellor Guskowitz and his team are looking at several things in the light of that U3 study, now that they have that data, to kind of see what our strategies are going to be as compared to other institutions like Stanford.
Great.
Yeah, that's a great point, Trustee Evans. We have that study, I think we need to bring that back to the conversation. And Nate, and gosh, where is Nate? Oh, he just stepped out. But we have good data, and now we have to sort of move forward. I think putting this in strategic initiatives would be a great move, the next move forward.
Glad to work with you all however we can. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final informational item for today is an update on the New School of Civic Life and Leadership. And I believe that will be with Provost Clemens and Dean Jim White.
And we have one special guest, if you'll indulge us. The interim director Sarah Truell is also here, so she's going to come up. I'll just kick it off and then hand it over. My activity on this has centered on recruitment. That is, shortly after the last meeting, the job was posted for the Director Dean, and I happened to be at AEI for an evening with Ron Daniels, and I promoted the ad there, and I've sent it out by email to numerous parties asking them to share it broadly with people who may be interested in applying. But to give you more details, Jim White is here, and I'm going to turn it over to him to give you the update.
Thank you, and thank you all for giving me the opportunity to give you a brief update. So I think, as you know, on October 6, the faculty, the nine faculty for the School of Civic Life and Leadership were announced. About 20 days later, on October 26, the Search Committee put together an ad. The ad is out. It has a beginning date of looking at applicants of November 15. It'll, we don't have a hard closed date on it, but we are, I've asked the Search Committee to begin looking at candidates at that time. So that's only a couple of weeks out now. We are doing all we can to advertise the position, to talk to people. I sent out an email to the Board of Trustees, or it might have been just a little web link. If you have people in your orbit who would be interested, I'd be love to have them apply. So that's, we are currently recruiting, and I'm, I don't have the final number yet on how many people have applied, but I know it's in the dozen or more category already. So I think that's good news for me. I would also like to give Professor Truell the opportunity to give you a little update on what the faculty have been doing over the last couple of weeks. So Sarah?
Welcome. Good afternoon, and thank you for inviting me to speak with you today, Chairman and members of the board. I want to leave time for questions, as I'm sure there are many, and if that's appropriate. But first, I'd like to take a brief moment to give you a report on skill and more broadly, discuss what I see as the importance of this work and the necessity of its success. The new and initial faculty of the School of Civic Life and Leadership have hit the ground running. Our first task was to draft a job ad for the permanent dean and director of the school, which Dean White just spoke of. Upon completion of that task, we have dived into work that is instrumental to establishing the school for UNC. This includes working on official documents related to hiring and promotion and rules and procedures for operations. We are following standard procedures in this regard, emphasizing transparency and using other schools and departments as prototypes. This includes the current School of Data Science and Society, also a department, the newest department in the college, the Department of Applied Sciences. We have started to discuss the curricular components of the school. We are pulling comparisons from other programs across the country, though, as I constantly remind the initial faculty, we are in the business of creating and not replicating here at UNC. We are also searching for a business officer. Additionally, the Program for Public Discourse, of which I remain the faculty director and now also resides in the school, continues to be broadly successful. We hosted two Abby Speaker Series events this fall, one with Irsad Manji and another on the First Amendment and Big Tech. In the spring, we are bringing in Barry Weiss and Frank Bruni for a conversation on objectivity in journalism. I also moderated the event on the war in Gaza this past Monday as a part of the Program for Public Discourse, which Beth mentioned earlier. In addition, our Agora Fellows program remains a place where students gather to learn valuable discourse skills and discuss contentious issues. In addition to their regular meetings, they attended a Braver Angels event in Raleigh this semester, and will be hosting PPD's inaugural Town Hall, Tar Heel Town Hall, to discuss the topic, what is our responsibility to diversity at UNC after affirmative action? Before taking questions, I'd like to conclude by saying just how honored I am to be temporarily at the helm of the School of Civic Life and Leadership. I see three distinct advantages that UNC has over other schools and current programs that either exist or are in the process of being created. First of all, skill is situated in the college, which is the cornerstone of our undergraduates' education. This provides us an opportunity to integrate our practices into our curriculum in a way that other programs and schools simply cannot. This will allow skill to break the ideological conformity that is so commonplace in a fragmented and decentralized university. Second, we are bringing together civics and discourse, both of which are necessary for democratic life. The civics provide the foundation, but the challenge of civics comes from the practice, which occurs through discourse. Many programs tackle one or the other. UNC at Chapel Hill will and can do both. Third, Chapel Hill. As the nation's first public, we have a unique opportunity to demonstrate our commitment to a range of views and ideas. Our students are already a diverse group, coming from all 100 counties and beyond, allowing us an unparalleled opportunity to converse across difference that simply is not clearly available at other locations across the country. When I think about the question, why are we doing this? The answer is clear, because there is nothing more important. It is impossible to look around and not see the deterioration of public engagement and also discourse. This is the problem of our generation, but more importantly, of our students' generation. And UNC will be a leader in this space. We cannot fail. We won't fail. And thank you so much for your time. I'd love to take some questions.
Thank you for being here. As I said, back in September, there are obviously a lot of eyes upon us. And so keeping everyone informed of our progress, I think, is really, is really important. Are there any questions for? Sarah, I heard you reference Braver Angels. What is that?
So, yeah, Braver Angels is a national organization that tries to facilitate conversations across differences. Sometimes on topics such as abortion, we did one, PPD that is, did one with them last spring on this topic as a part of a larger event that we did on abortion. And they have a particular practice in which they engage in to have those kinds of conversations. We like to do a little bit more with regards to the practices that we're promoting when it comes to facilitating disagreement and discourse and how to come together. But they're a great kind of example for how, or one way I should say, that some people are having those contentious conversations. Thank you for your question.
Any other questions? Trustee Brian?
I know, maybe in addition to Braver Angels, there are maybe a couple other similar groups. And I know maybe Heterodox is setting up a campus or group on campus. Are, do those groups, do they tend to naturally come find PPD/Skill now? When, or engage with y'all?
Yeah, so I think we've become a clear focal point for a lot of those different conversations, which is great, because it only opens up more opportunities for our students, our faculty and others to both hear different perspectives, but in the case of some topics, to even converse across them. I do think that what skill will provide will be unique to that, right? Because a lot of that work tends to be on broad national issues, and what we can do is really train our faculty, train our students, work in those contexts to engage right here on campus with one another. And that's going to be the pathway forward as we, you know, develop these skills in our students at UNC, who then go out to serve our state and beyond. That's what we're really setting them up for, is that success. So it's nice to have it, you know, housed here in Chapel Hill. Yeah, thank you for your question.
Thanks. Any other questions? Mr. Chairman, I'd just say, I had the pleasure of getting together with Sarah for breakfast a couple of weeks ago and hearing firsthand some of the progress. And I took the liberty of asking her, we started talking about running. I took the liberty to ask her what time, thinking that I might one-up her, what time she got up to run that morning. And she answered, four o'clock or something? What'd you say?
4:15.
4:15, so. I bet that's earlier than Trustee Blaine gets going.
Fair enough. Feel free to join me anytime. Not her. Thank you. Well, she can run. Yeah, thank you.
Sounds like a natural alarm clock. Seeing no other comments, Professor Truell, thank you for your time. Dean White, thank you for your time with us, and I really appreciate of all the work that the inaugural faculty are putting into, into this.
Thank you. I mean, thank you for all of your support too, and making this the success that it is already and will continue to be.
That is our last open session item, so I'll now entertain a motion to go into closed session. Discussion debate. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are in closed session.
Great, thank you. Let's move right on into Budget Finance, if that's okay. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the November meeting of the Committee on Budget, Finance and Infrastructure. As Chair of the Committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the conflict of interest under the state government. Mindfulness of time, Mr. Chairman. Okay, good afternoon. Welcome to the November meeting of the Committee on Budget, Finance and Infrastructure. As Chair of the Committee, I must remind all members of their duty under the State Government Ethics Act to avoid conflicts of interest and appearances of conflict of interest. If you know of any conflict or appearance of conflict with respect to any matter coming before the committee today, please identify it at this time. Okay, seeing none. Mr. McClure, will you please call the roll?
Chair Bolick.
Present.
Vice Chair Kottis. Mr. Blaine. Mr. Brenner. Dr. Jones. Mr. Meekins. Mr. Patel. Mr. Pryor. Mr. Turner. Mrs. White. Mr. Chairman, you have a call.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Our first item of business is to review several items on the committee's consent agenda for approval this afternoon. I have had a request from a committee member to remove the Port Hole Alley redevelopment from the consent agenda, so we will take that up afterwards. Items on the consent agenda, fairly routine matters, the Chapman Hall cryo EM renovation, designer selection of the pit stormwater improvements, we actually heard about that at the last meeting. So with that being said, is there any additional items that need to come off the consent agenda and move to open session? Hearing none, all those in favor. Oh, I need a motion to approve. Can I get a motion? Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, great. Our next item of business is to hear from John King to give us our annual endowment fund report. John, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Bolick. This is the short version. This pertains to the Endowment Fund, which is invested in the Chapel Hill Investment Fund. At the last meeting, I gave a more comprehensive report on the results of the Chapel Hill Investment Fund. But the Board of Governance regulations require that each institution's Board of Trustees submit an annual endowment report to the Board of Governors. And so the purpose of this report is to basically fulfill this requirement. On October 17, 2023, the Board of Directors of the Endowment Fund met here in the Carolina Inn and approved this annual report for submission to the Board of Trustees, and I'm now submitting it to the Board, to the Committee, and tomorrow to be taken up by the Board, to be approved and forwarded to the Board of Governors to comply with the regulation. I'll just give a very highlight. I'll just give a very highlight. It was, it was a bit of a disappointing year, as I spoke the last time around. The, the Endowment Fund Board, which totals about 2.2 billion of the $5.1 billion in the Chapel Investment Fund, the remaining dollars are, come from the various endowment, I'm sorry, from the various foundation funds invested in the fund. But the Endowment Fund is about $2.2 billion. This year, it actually declined in value by a little over 66 million. The main cause of the decline in value was $118 million that was distributed for program spending under the terms of the, of the distributions. We had a slight $8 million loss on the fund during the year, and $60 million was added in new gifts. So that's basically the, the change in the fund. At the bottom of this report, which is in your materials, you can see that the, the Endowment Fund Board of Directors was comprised of a number of individuals that are elected by this board, met throughout the year, and once again recommends the approval of this report for submission to the Board of Governors. Any questions? Hearing none, I will, yeah.
Thanks. Thanks, John. Anybody have any questions of Mr. King? John, do a fantastic job. Thanks. I hear a motion to approve this report for sending to the Board of Governors. I have a motion from trustee Meekins. I have a second. Second, trustee White, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, great. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, next item of business is a request for lease renewal. Gordon Merkline, Merkline is here. Gordon, come on up. You and I had a nice discussion about this, and I think the board will be very interested in hearing your report on this.
Thank you. And I have, we have a lease renewal as well as a lease by acquisition. If you want to take action on this individually.
Let's take up those together, if that's okay. So that would be the next item, which would be, we have the lease discussion, and then the next item after that, property acquisition.
All right. So the first item is a lease renewal for the Renaissance Computer Institute, which is part of the Vice Chancellor for Research Division. And what we are doing there is we're reducing the square footage, the footprint. We are an early termination for lease and consolidating down to 27,000 square feet. And we are getting a reduced rate on that. So this will create a net savings of $225,000 a year on this. The terms that are in front of you are for, are for $21 per square foot for 27,500 square feet. The building is at Europa. The group has been there. I know this says here since 2016, but it's actually been, been there for about 10 years prior to that as well. And we have also shortened the terms to a lease term of 36 months with two 24-month renewals, because this is a group that has been discussed as part of a consolidation into Port Hole Alley, if that project moves forward. So we wanted to align the timing of that to provide that opportunity if, if that does arise down the question, down the road. The annual spend for the, for the, for the lease is around $800,000. The, the second lease is the Frank Porter Graham Institute, which is currently in two leased buildings on South Greensboro Road. Frank Porter Graham is also a division of the Vice Chancellor for Research. On this lease, we, the university and the system office negotiated the transfer slash sale of the Spangler Building and their old office building at the bottom of Raleigh Road. So we negotiated a 99-year lease with the Chapel Hill Foundation Real Estate Holdings. So Chapel Hill Foundation Real Estate Holdings is going to lease, do a sublease back to the university for just the cost of operating the building, which we currently estimate at $12.25 per square foot. So there will be no profit by the foundation. It will just be a pure pass-through. This should create annual savings of around $500,000 for the university. So the terms of this transaction are 60,000 square feet, which is the entirety of the building. I will note that there's an additional 20,000 square feet of space in that building that is, will be unused. But because we are doing just a cost of operating the building, once you turn the power on, once you turn the HVAC on, you're in effect have operating expenses for the entire building, but we will have the option to move other groups into that space. And we are estimating the cost of that at $12.25 per square foot. Sixteen-month lease. And again, opportunity to create additional savings for the university by reducing our footprint from third-party landlords.
Gordon, thank you. For, for new members of the board, I'm glad, or, or other members of the board would be glad to explain sort of the Spangler Building transfer. If you want more information on that and how that worked with the foundation and the Real Estate Holdings Corporation. But suffice to say, I actually asked Gordon to present that, because I wanted him to be able to show that he's roughly, for, for the same operations, we're spending about three-quarters of a million dollars less.
That's correct.
Based on, on his work and his team's work. So I wanted him to be able to highlight that for the board and the work he's doing. So do I have a motion to approve the lease renewal and property acquisition by lease? I have a motion from Chair Pryor. Do I have a second? I have a second from Vice Chair Turner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great, great. Thank you, Gordon.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your hard work. Next, I'll call on Vice Chancellor Nate Knuffman and Vice Chancellor for Research Penny Gordon Larson. Is Penny here?
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Bolick. Next item is, for your consideration, the designer selection for the Translational Research Building. So in your materials, you'll have, you'll see some additional information on the project budget, but also just a little information about the, the project being advertised and the proposals received. We are recommending the committee approve the selection of the firms in the order listed there. Before we ask you to take action on this, I'd like to invite Penny Gordon Larson to, to provide additional information on the, the building itself.
All right. Great. So I have slides in the deck. But before I start, I just want to express gratitude to, to the trustees for your support for research. It means a lot when you talk about research with, with us, with campus, with the folks that you engage with. So thank you. All right, next slide. So as you know, our research enterprise is, is a great source of pride for us at Carolina, and we're global leaders in biomedical research, and our research is a key driver of, of the North Carolina economy. And we're facing some challenges that we need to address. And one of those challenges is that we're maxed out of lab space on campus. And what that means is that in, in many cases, for example, when we hear about a leading talent in the field in biomedical research, or really any basic science, we can't attract them here, because we don't have the space right now to offer them. And so we are losing opportunities to bring in the best and the brightest faculty and talent. So that's one issue. Another issue is that we're working very hard to close the innovation gap. We have significant research and development on our campus that does not get translated fast enough out to the public good. And so we need the labs and equipment to do that. And in particular, where we're missing opportunities are in high-containment lab space, in wet lab space, and in imaging capabilities to facilitate drug discovery. And so without this kind of investment, we, we are losing our own market share of competitive research dollars that go to other places that have better and more available resources. And so in order to stay competitive, we need to reinvest. Next slide. So when we think about the research translation pipeline and the goal to get research out of this campus, and you think about all the way through discovery, translation, commercialization and investment, research, next slide, please, occupies a really big part of how we get our work out into commercial space. And so research is really the nutrition that drives that translational pipeline. Next slide. So this building that, that we're talking about today for the designer is a state-of-the-art facility that will allow us to compete, to continue to stay competitive. It'll stimulate our future in science, allow us to attract that top talent that we need to attract, and enable path-breaking research in three of our key strategic research priority areas. And those are infectious disease, cancer and neuroscience. It'll also allow us to have an environment for innovation, and it'll create a fertile ground for therapeutics, for imaging devices and other commercial products. We really need to diversify the kind of commercial outputs that we have on our, our campus. And really importantly, and we don't talk about this enough, is that when we invest in these kinds of lab settings, they really provide state-of-the-art settings for our students and trainees who graduate then working in these top kinds of, of settings. And will cement our position as a leading public research university. Next slide. So you've seen this, is, this is our research growth over time from the 2000s till now. And what I want to note for you, next slide, is that we built the Genetic Medicine Building in 2008. And that really led to the growth of our research enterprise that ultimately doubled our research dollars on our campus. And the other thing I want to note on this slide is that these pink bars at the top on the far right, all of the different colors that are not blue on here are one-time federal research dollars that we competed for. The pink is where we were competing for pandemic dollars from the feds. And we did that really effectively. But one thing that, that you may not be aware of is when we were competing for those dollars, there was a point in time when the Fed said, we need you to, we need you to do this work. We want you to apply for things. We're ready to give you awards. And we had to say, I'm sorry, we don't have capacity to do the work, and we had to turn those dollars away. And so this building will, will help us have more capacity. Next slide. So what we're looking at with the building is an investment in, of 228 million over that, 228.6. And the goal here, these are pre-bid estimates, are approximately 165 square feet total. And the building will include advanced imaging suites to support basic science and drug discovery. It'll increase our wet lab space and, and it will provide over 10,000 square feet of high-containment lab space. So the way that we're financing this is through debt financing and from the UNC, you know, FNA receipts. No state-approved BA positions are being sought. We're doing this all on the FNA and debt financing. So it's going to be split 50% from the center and then 50% apportioned out to the schools who will occupy the building. And that is School of Medicine, which is, has the lion's share of the building, College of Arts and Sciences, the Gilling School of Global Public Health and Eschelman School of Pharmacy. We need to have site clearing begin in summer of 2024 in order to go into the negotiation for FNA, which we're about to renegotiate the, our FNA amount. And so we need to show that we are clearing that site and have an active project at that time. So I'll be out there with a shovel in 2024 if we don't get moving. So construction is supposed to begin in 2025 December, and we proposed occupancy in July of 2028. So that's the backdrop of the building. Nate, do you want to take over? We can answer questions.
Tony, can I just ask a quick question regarding our negotiated NIH indirect rate? When that is up next and how this timeline fits against that? Because I know how important that is for that renegotiated rate, and we want to move it up.
Right. We are working on the paperwork now. It will be submitted relatively soon. And then we have to, at this time next year, we have to have shown that we're actively moving forward to the building, that the building is a reality. And so this really needs to be, we really need to approve the design selection now so that we can get that in motion. So that's why we're bringing this forward today.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chancellor Knuffman, you want to kind of just do a brief, quick kind of thumbnail on the funding through the FNA and how that works? I know you've given that, but there are new board members that may want to be maybe included in that proposal and that plan.
Sure. The FNA is just the indirect dollars that we receive as part of doing research. And so with some of the margin that we've accumulated, some centrally, we're able to allocate a portion of that FNA to this project. We also, as Penny outlined, are asking the units in a proportional manner to, to put in some of the FNA they earn. So on every grant they're earning, the, the pieces they earn, we're asking them to contribute a proportional amount as well. So roughly, that's 50/50. 50 coming from the center of the university, 50 from those, those units.
And, and one other thing I had, just for a quick discussion. I had asked you and your team to look at, as we build new buildings, we talk, we, this board has talked about athletic facilities and the potential utilization. Because, for example, the chancellor and I, we're at Notre Dame and saw a fantastic building at Notre Dame, where they had taken a building and built it onto the football stadium, and then were able to utilize the roof profile of that building to add premium seating to football. And I think we, you and I had a pretty good discussion that TRB probably would not fit that. But I wanted to just throw that out there for future building sort of projects as something that we ought to consider. And like your just general thoughts on that.
No, thank you for raising that. I've spoken to our facilities team already about the, the suggestion. And I think with the right building and the, I know other universities have used it for either classroom space, maybe some student-serving space, like rec areas. And it's an efficient way to be able to kind of attach and be able to access some premium seating. So we've had some conversation about that, and the facilities team's already thinking about something.
I don't think TRB is really suited for that, just for what it's worth. Any questions of Vice Chancellor? Yes, sir. Chairman Pryor. Okay, it's down there where the other.
Yeah, right. It's down there. It's where Dave said, down there, down there. It's near the Genetic Medicine Building. And so we'll basically be able to have research teams that will be able to go very rapidly from these various buildings that are working on similar kinds of research so that we can get that full translation, both within the building and then in the neighboring buildings. So it's up in the complex, very close to where we, where we have the chancellor's reception for football games.
And as it relates to competitive benchmarking, is this something that our in-game puts us in a definitive leadership position? It sounds like the earlier stats were behind, or is this, just where does this put us as an in-game?
So basically, when you look at all the universities, research universities and their investments, the out of all of our peer institutions, the university that did not invest in research in this way with such a large building, all of our other competitors have, but UVA did not. And UVA has not seen the kind of growth that our competitors have after these kinds of investments. So it really does seal us in a position of major growth. And it'll be, you know, a beautiful resource that, that will draw faculty here, top faculty. Yeah.
And I'll just add that, that FNA rate is so important, and it, it positions us much better to move up closer to where the Johns Hopkins of the worlds are, which their FNA rate is 70-some percent. We're at about 54, 50.
55.
55%. And so we want to move that up.
Any additional questions for Vice Chancellor Gordon Larson or for Vice Chancellor Knuffman? Okay, hearing none. Let's go ahead. Can I have a, a motion to approve the diners, designer selection for Translational Research Building? I have a, a motion from trustee Turner, Vice Chair Turner, and I have a second from Chairman Pryor. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, great. It passes. I had removed the Port Hole Alley, increase in advanced planning and spending authority from the consent agenda at the request of a member of the board, Vice Chancellor Knuffman.
Sure. So for your consideration, is an increase in advanced planning spending authority for Port Hole Alley redevelopment? We previously received approval for $2 million of authority back in January of 2022. We're asking for an additional $3 million. We're asking for an additional $3 million just to have a little additional time. It's also a function of being able, re-scoping the project in light of some renewed idea about overall dollars and funding, and also the inclusion of the Ackland Art Museum. Happy to address any questions.
Trustee Codis.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. Maybe I missed it earlier. I don't remember hearing anything about Ackland moving into Port Hole Alley until right when we got these materials. Was there another briefing or? Did I mean, I may have missed it, so I just didn't know if it had been discussed before.
There have been some ongoing conversations. I know at one point there was consideration of a much larger Ackland on the corner, a premium site there at the, and at a much larger scale, about three times the size. We had visited and considered that. And I think after additional back and forth and thinking through recalibrating whether or not there was something else that would meet the Ackland's needs moving forward, we've started to coalesce around an idea of of about $40 million of capacity there from donors to support some scope. And given the the location of Port Hole and the work being done there, an idea to to really think about those two things together. And I know that the chancellor or Mike Andreessen can expand potentially on that donor relationship and their excitement enthusiasm about what that looks like and.
So did it replace an existing planned part or is it adding 40,000 more feet?
It's adding.
Okay, so it's going more vertical?
It is. It is going more vertical. It's actually just expanding the footprint some. And so we were very careful to make sure that it was strictly additive, additive in dollars and additive in in square footage and that it was staying on its own.
Okay, and I guess the second question would be the funding for that. I know we've talked before about a lot of in kind maybe that goes to Ackland with art gifts, but that's not necessarily cash to build.
Correct.
So this would be 40 million cash contributed to to fund that or?
Yes, the museum is completely clear that to participate in this project, they will have to fund it 100% with outright cash gifts or liquid assets that could be liquidated into cash. They, as you know, this larger project that Vice Chancellor Knopfman talked about had a group of donors that were interested in that. We spent much of the spring talking to the donors to say, would an alternative plan be something you're interested in supporting? And the resounding commitment was yes, you should pursue this. We're now in the conversation with those same donors about securing their specific financial commitment to make this a reality. Without it, we can't go forward. So we're in that discussion right now, 100% donor funded.
I I think all of that sounds great. I think the only last item that we probably should think about is one that trustee Pryor's raised or Chair Pryor's raised before, which is the problem with folks in the hallways and alleys down there and the public urination on Franklin Street. So I would hope that if we were going to make that sort of a significant investment, especially for an art gallery on Franklin Street, we'd have a commitment from the city that they provide a clean front door for us.
We've, we continue to have conversations with the with the town about that. And I think the expanded presence, we're continuing to additional real estate right in that block, our presence there even just, I think, reemphasizes that even more. And I think that we're continuing to have those conversations with the town.
And again, we've said, we've said that before, but you know, it's almost until we close the checkbook that they might take that more seriously. And I think there's a feeling among the board that if they can't address that, that's going to discourage investment.
I do have a question. Vice Chancellor Knopfman, now where exactly are we pulling the additional $3 million? Where are those dollars coming from?
Those are coming from reserves, just trust funds and reserve.
Because there was an initial discussion when Ackland had come to the board that they were going to pay for the entire assessment. Did I recall that correctly? They were going to pay for the assessment. We had donors that were going to pay for the assessment of the 120,000 square foot building they initially requested.
Wouldn't you say assessment? Are you talking about the design and?
The assessment. I think there was an assessment they had, a feasibility study that they wanted to pay for.
Right. They had. There was some funds that were made available for for that. I mean, it was, I can't recall the exact figure of it. I mean, Evan may have the details on it.
All right, we did a separate study and assessment that was funded through the Ackland, and that's what led us to today.
Okay, great. And so Vice Chancellor Andreessen, this, you're, based on your experience, are you confident that this, that that we're not going to spend $5 million, get a plan that's going to collect dust because the donors are not going to follow through? I mean, I think that's really the question. I mean, are we, if we're going to, we're going to spend this money, it's university funds to build a plan. Are the donors going to be there to fund this addition or are we going to be back to the original?
Now, you're not under oath, but.
So as I understand it, the the overall project is already under designed. And this is an additive to that existing design, really adding a third floor, which will be gallery space. And and we'll use the updated visiting center, visitor center as the entrance off of Franklin. We made it very clear to the museum that they have to raise all this money. And we're confident, given the donor conversations, although not signed, that the donor interest will be there. We've also said, if they don't get to the 40 million, that's all they will do until they do. It's got to be on them.
Well, when you, when you say that, I mean, and I appreciate that, I would wonder is, let's say we get to 30 million. I mean, is there an expectation that this board is going to approve an additional $10 million in funds or approve going to the legislature and asking for $10 million to complete the project? Because we've been in that situation before with the business school, for example, where we've had to go to the legislature and ask for money to finish a building when we had promised the legislature that we would supply a certain amount of of funding and we failed to do so and the legislature bailed us out. So I don't want to put this board in that situation again, quite frankly.
I hear your question very directly and and we have been very clear from the beginning that there will be no ask of the state. No, they might want to volunteer to do something. That's always nice when they do that. But this addition to Portal Alley needs to be 100% donor funded. And if there is time, sometimes pledges take time where there would be some financing, that the cost of financing would also be included in what they have to raise.
Any, any other questions?
I I would just say that trustee Codis, I don't think you you missed anything. I I missed the same thing. I didn't know anything about this, I guess, until the last meeting. And then it was at a, a endowment or foundation meeting, I had a conversation with somebody who was a donor to Ackland. And I asked, have you all got the $40 million? And the response that he gave me was not encouraging as in it was all lined up. But that, you know, that we just heard from, you know, Vice Chancellor Andreessen that they can, they can raise it, they can raise it. I'm certainly not opposed to that.
I'm not opposed to it either, particularly if it's going to be financed by donors because we did hear a tremendous amount of discussion about donors. The original, for for new board members, there was an original proposed, where there was, I say original. There was a proposal by the Ackland Art Museum to add 120,000 square foot building over there on Cameron across sort of Catty Corner from the, maybe it wasn't 120, maybe it was 100,000, whatever. It was a big number, $120 million building. And they wanted, they wanted the, this board to approve going to the legislature basically for 60 million of that. And and that this board was not in favor of that. And so that that plan sort of went to the side. And so I'm, and again, this was sort of given to me sort of late in the game as well, Chairman Pryor. But but my assumption is, based on their initial thought that they would be able to raise 60 million, that they would be able to get to 40 million. Is that clear? Is that right, Michael?
That's the intention we're having with donors right now.
Well, if I took too long, I'm sorry, but trustee White.
Yeah, I just think also we should, for the new board members, the reason that we were not in favor of going to the state was thinking about the restoration that's needed for other buildings on campus. And it was a prime piece of real estate, not, so these are considerations that we have to make when we're going to state.
Those are both good points. One, one thing I want to note is just there is an off ramp too, if we don't get to the dollar amount raised, just, just for.
Trustee Codis.
So the, the incremental 3 million is coming from university trust funds. Is that sourced then from Ackland or is that, where is that funding coming from that?
No, it's reserves that we've accumulated just by the the margin we create each year, trying to tuck away some contingency at the university. And so we're just taking from that piece to fund this.
Well, one way to make sure somebody's going to raise 40 mil is if you have them put up the initial three, then if they can't raise the 40, they're out 3 million.
Chairman Pryor, did you have something in your life?
Sorry.
Okay. Any, Mr. Chancellor, do you have anything you want to add to that, anything?
No, I would just say that when we had to go back to the General Assembly on the Keenan Flagler Building, Nate, correct me if I'm wrong, but we actually raised above and beyond the 75 million. We raised, I think, close to 86 million, but it was the escalating costs in construction that forced us to go back to the General Assembly for additional resources there. Is that correct?
Correct.
So we were able to deliver on that. And like Vice Chancellor Andreessen said, I'm, I'm confident that we'll, that we will get that. We've been in conversations with several donors around the 40 million.
Yeah. I think trustee Codis's point is well taken though, to make sure these are intended cash gifts as opposed to in kind gifts of art. Okay, anybody else? And I, and and, you know, we have to understand, I would say to your point, Chancellor, the 40 million today, we don't know what escalation is going to look like in the future. So 40 million may actually end up being 48 million. So we need to keep that in mind as well. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve? I have a motion from Chairman Pryor. Do I have a second? Have a second from trustee Meekins. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All right, it is approved. Thank you. Thank you, Michael, for stepping up with the information. And Evan, thank you as well. Always appreciate you being here. And that is very helpful. Now, next item on the agenda is tuition and fees. Vice Chancellor Knopfman.
Thank you, Chair Bolick. Each year we bring proposals on tuition and fees for your consideration and approval. They really break down into five categories here you see in front of you. So campus based tuition, that's the undergraduate rate for both resident, non-resident, the school based tuition, and that's undergraduate and graduate for campus based tuition. School based tuition is really at the graduate level, program specific, the premium, student fees, and then we've got both housing rates and dining rates for your consideration. It's a lot of ground to cover. I will do my best to be efficient. You can see the process that we we follow each year in putting these in front of you. We are at the the top right hand corner for Board of Trustee Review. That's where we are at currently. Preceding this, there was a lot of great work. We have a student fee advisory subcommittee and then a tuition and fee advisory task force. These are groups, students, but also representatives from across the university weighing in and considering the proposals and going through in detail. I'd like to take a moment just to thank the students for a lot of great engagement and participation, the process benefits from having them very involved. Also like to note trustee Pryor, his involvement in the Tuition and Fee Advisory Task Force and and participating there as well. After this board, after approval here, we'll move to submit these to the system office for consideration. The Board of Governors then evaluates these in the January through March timeframe. Typically, they're finalized in the March timeframe from the Board of Governors. One key ingredient in what we do each year is governed by what the Board of, or what the system office distributes in terms of guidance. So importantly, on tuition, tuition for resident undergrad will stay flat for the eighth year in a row. So a non-resident tuition at the undergraduate level can be considered, so changes can be considered there. Also, graduate student tuition can be considered changes. In the mandatory fee category, mandatory fees are fees that apply to all students and very limited flexibility in being able to consider increases there only if critical to maintaining core activities. And the system office guidance noted the board will be looking closely at the, at the justifications there. Special fees are program specific. We don't have any for your consideration today. Application fees, we don't have any for your consideration today. So thinking about tuition and fees, it's sometimes helpful just to start with, where do we look? What do we look like in comparison to the UNC system? Here, it might be a little tough to see, but this is UNC Chapel Hill in the blue box compared to the rest of the system institutions. See the first two columns, both resident and non-resident tuition. Resident tuition at $7,000 while the highest in the system, incredible value compared to our Board of Governor peer set. So and then same, same experience on the non-resident side. We're a little closer to market among our Board of Governor peer set, but still below. When you move across to the general fees, you'll see five categories there, athletics, health services, student activities, education and technology and campus security. And there's a sixth, the debt service fee. Those are really, those, those six are considered our mandatory fee set. And they're subject to a 3% cap. So among all of those, you can go up each year only 3%. And when you look at those, I think it's worth noting. With the exception of the health services, we tend to rank at the bottom or in the bottom two or three within the system in terms of our fee level comparatively. And when you look at that total fee column and you see ours, $1,732, it is nearly 40% below the next closest institution to us in the system, which is NC State. So again, our fee level being being very comparatively low. So this is looking at undergrads. It's the same story on the graduate student side. Here's a table. The only difference you'll see, that total fee level is about $22 less. This is a slight difference in the student activity fee and how it's charged to graduate students versus undergraduate students. So looking at, this is just a, a, a pie chart on how we use tuition. This is just looking at tuition. I do, I do think it's worth noting, if you take a step further out, when we think about tuition, we're, right now, we have in front of you for consideration tuition changes. Tuition plus appropriation, these are the two sources the institution really relies on primarily to fund our academic mission. So the, those two sources in particular. So it makes sense when you think about tuition by itself and the use of it. You can see here this breakdown, the bulk of this goes into instruction, academic support, some in financial aid, and then you can see some plant and other support there as well. So on to the rate recommendations. So first, we're going to talk about campus based tuition. Again, that's the undergraduate, non-resident, we're going to consider, and then also the graduate. During the process, I will note our tuition fee advisory task force had some very good discussion around just the importance of of what makes Carolina, Carolina, that that accessibility and affordability and how seriously we take that. And so I think that was, that was certainly weighed during the conversation, as was any impact on enrollment. We want to be sensitive to how we price and what that, what the implications might be for enrollment. And then obviously, financial aid is a component there too, as you, as you increase the price of attendance. However, when considering those factors in balance with with the other pieces about just where UNC Chapel Hill ranks, the the great value proposition it offers, the incredible demand we have, I think applications are up 14%, I think, to date. So again, incredible demand here. We've had some conversations, I noted this last time we talked, but this board has talked about where do we want to price undergraduate, non-resident? Is there a way to close that gap with our, our Board of Governor peer set over a multiple? over a multiple years? And we have, we, we talked about a strategy trying to get there. Um, another consideration, it's, it's been several years since we've had a, on the graduate student side, since we've actually increased graduate student, uh, rates. I think we've had one increase in the last five years and that was on non-residents. And, and then, um, you, you know, we talked a little bit about the importance of tuition just being a source supporting the academic mission. The other consideration here is last year, we looked at 20 different school-based tuition increases. So on the grad, so for graduate rates in particular, on the graduate side, those program-specific graduate rates, there, there were already a lot of tuition increases. Given that there are fewer to consider this year, um, we thought there was some merit in thinking about a broader, across the board, a campus-based tuition increase for, for graduates. So, so given that, the, the tuition fee advisory task force and, and, uh, puts forward really a, a 5% increase on undergraduate, non-residents, that's equivalent to a $1,868 uh, increase. You can see that in the table there. Again, even with that increase, we'd remain more than $3,000 below, uh, our, the peer average. That's on the undergraduate, non-resident side. On the graduate side, the proposal is a 2% increase for both residents and non-residents. That's equivalent to $200 on residents and $212 on residents and $577 on, on non-residents. Here's some, uh, additional data. First, we start with graduate, just, just looking at, this is looking at Board of Governor, public peers. So we've kind of switched from UNC system comparison now over to the Board of Governor, peer set, public. And, uh, one other consideration when looking at this data, this shows the proposed increases for 2425, but we're comparing to 2324 data for our peers. So they're all likely to be, or, or they're all potentially considering changes as well. So to really be apples to apples, there's our, there's probably some lift in all of those rates that you're looking at for our peer set. Um, and again, you see on, this is graduate tuition, you see first, uh, on the resident side, 12,752, um, that's, that there are three institutions of our peer set below that. Um, and you can see, uh, at the non-resident side, a little closer to the market, but still, um, still below. That's on the graduate side. Here we're looking at undergrad, uh, non-resident, again undergraduate. And again, these are 2425 um, proposals against 2324. You can see on the resident side, uh, at $9,000 tuition and fees, you can see that that's um, uh, markedly lower, or the only institution in the Board of Governor peer set lower is, is one Florida. In terms of non-resident, at 41 to 11, still below, uh, the, the peer average with this increase. So that's the campus-based tuition proposals. Um, now I'm shifting gears away from campus-based, which again, kind of applies to all, and then going into program-specific or the school-based tuition increases. Here, uh, again, robust conversation about each of the proposals, uh, and we'll go through them in a little bit more detail. Again, during that, we, we got a lot of feedback on, 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 had some good conversation around accessibility and affordability. Again, considerations for online programs, impact on enrollment again came up in terms of just where we're pricing and how that might affect demand. And then lastly, an important component, whenever we're, there's a requirement as part of our, our process when considering tuition increases is to ensure that students are involved in that process and that um, programs are able to document and specify how they engage students in considering any, any impacts. But it, on balance, the, the, the tuition fee advisory task force recommended moving forward with these, and that was mainly because of just, again, when we're talking about graduate tuition and where we rank, it's, it's really needs to be market-based. And one other consideration, the system office recently revised their funding formula for the system. It's a little less generous on the graduate student, um, uh, appropriations, but in exchange, they, they noted for institutions to really price and encouraged us to price our, um, programs to market and, and giving, really giving us more autonomy, a little bit flexibility there. And so I think you're, you're seeing that reflected in some, a little bit more activity in this space. At the, as I mentioned, 20 proposals last year, I think we've got four to look at today. And so those four, you can see here in front of you, the four schools. Um, I, I did want to put a little context around this because it's hard to, hard to look at these and really think about how this compares. There are 43 school-based tuitions at, at, uh, at UNC Chapel Hill. So if you, when you look at it this way, there's three schools or three programs being changed here. So a little less than 10% of the school-based tuitions being adjusted. There's one additional one where we're establishing a rate, the last one, that school of data science is actually establishing one, not increasing or changing the tuition rate. Um, the, start with the Adams School of Dentistry there, there's a proposal for a $2,000 increase on residents, $3,000 increase on non-residents, equivalent to a 6% increase there. And really this is, this is focused on just maintaining the high quality of the program. And most of the dollars being used for recruitment and retention of faculty and staff and implementing a new curriculum. Again, even with those increases, they'll be priced below their peers. Hussmann School of Journalism, um, this is really about continuing their excellence and supporting their master students and looking at where they're priced after the increases, they're still in line with, with peers or below. School of Law, this is the second across-the-board increase since 2012 for the School of Law. So for, for a long time, they had not increased tuition at the school. They're now catching up to some degree. Again, a, a great value there. And, and with that increase, they remain, um, the lowest tuition among their peer group there. Uh, and, and those percentages there are five and eight percent for non-residents and residents. That last proposal for, for your consideration is just establishing the rate for the School of Data Science and Society, Master of Applied Data Science Program. Uh, this, this program was approved earlier this year. This is just putting the rates in place.
Why, why not, um, increase the non-resident rate more than the resident rate is there if we've got room? For instance?
Trustee Cottis, is that with respect to any of these individual ones? Are you, are you referring to the, to just broader?
Sorry, these individual ones, I've got questions about the, the overall earlier. I know the, the resident rate there for undergrad was flat. So, but here, um, the resident rates, for instance, at the Hussmann School, residents would see a $1,000 increase, non-residents $300. So. Is that right?
It, it is correct. And, and, and your question is why, why that differential?
Yeah, or why not place, you know, we have a constitutional requirement to the people of the state, not to the people of other states. So from my standpoint, uh, if people of other states want to come here, we should charge market rate. And to the extent we charge market rate, that's great. But if we raise in-state tuition up to then help subsidize out-of-state attendees, I, I don't think that's complying with our constitutional requirement, but.
I, I think the, is some of the motivation there, and, and I don't want to speak for the program too much, but I, I do think the differential might be just that there's quite a gap already between resident and non-resident. When you look at the, the non-resident already being twice as expensive. Um, so you're seeing that they're really looking at their market and, and trying to price where they, where they see that being appropriate in terms of the, the, the market that they're looking at. Um, that the, in terms of having non-resident tuition be, be market-based, I think especially on the undergraduate side, I think that's, that's right. And that's the conversation we've had collectively. And that's why we've been trying to get closer there. On the graduate side, it's really, you know, I think specific to individual programs and, and the demand there, and they're trying to calibrate those, the pricing accordingly.
And then just one more follow-up to that. So student aid is listed as one of the big proposed uses, and I know we've got 15% of tuition used effectively for need-based aid now. Do we have a sense of how much that is of this or?
Yeah, for the Hussmann School piece, more than 85% of that's going into the program personnel expenses. So it's less than 15% going into student aid.
Okay.
And, and on all these, we, we certainly check to make sure we're compliant with that, that Board of Governor policy, about 15% of our tuition, oh, sorry, 15% of our tuition being able to be put in a need-based aid. Some of the aid that's noted is also merit-based because it's really about attracting the, the strongest students.
Trustee Blaine.
Uh, Vice Chancellor, were you, did you want to continue through the fees or were we stopping to have a discussion about tuition?
I can, and we can, we can revisit any questions if, if, if that's.
Okay, let's move on. Go ahead. And then save your questions and we'll ask them.
So transitioning to fees, we, we have, we have one fee increase for your consideration. It's a $12.77 increase in the student activity fee for the Carolina Union. Um, they have not had an increase since 1920, um, 1920 fiscal year, 1920. I've done that before. I've done that before. I was just making sure you were waiting.
Trustee Meekins, the oldest member of the board was here then.
The, the bulk of the dollars, uh, uh, associated with that increase are to support salary increases for employees and also for students. There's a small percentage for critical R and R that they're using. I, I, I will, I will note, if, if you look at the table with that $12.77 increase, 70 cent, 77 cents increase, there's a, it, it's equivalent to a 3.4% increase in the student activity fee. When you look at total mandatory fees, our mandatory fees would go up less than 1%, so 0.7%. And again, that's on a base that's nearly 40% below the next closest system institution to us. So that, that's the, the fee proposal for your consideration. That was, uh, at the undergraduate level. Here's what it looks like at the graduate level. Again, it's the, a, a similar, similar profile. And then, uh, also have housing and dining rates to go through. So housing's first, uh, looking at housing, you can see here, uh, over the last several years, we have had increases in the range of two to 3% annually. We have not had a rate incre- we did not have any rate increase in 2020, 2021. Um, it, when you look at our housing, the Beatty Hill rates really stick out as being undermarket. And we, we're really in a position with housing, just building back some of the reserves and our ability to address needs, uh, we're, we're put on hold really largely in COVID during that time. And so we're in, in that posture where we're trying to rebuild some pieces. Um, when you think about the, the needs driving these increases, there is a significant backlog of deferred maintenance. You can see several of the major projects listed there on the slide. The dollars associated with those continue to increase. There's also a need for just upgrades for critical systems. Um, you see some of those noted. Also, uh, uh, other needs are, are really, uh, just some of the major capital. We are at a position where I think many of the smaller um, projects have already been addressed and we're getting to a position where there's a need for some, some larger dollar investments. And so rebuilding that, that balance in, 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 in housing is, is critically important. You've also just got operating cost pressures. Uh, whether that's primarily in, in compensation for employees, but then also utilities are, are adding some pressure. So all of those, all of those pieces are motivating factors for, for housing. Um, here we're looking at, uh, a, a series of rates, 3, 5, and 7%. You can see what those correspond to in terms of either at the residence hall level, Ram Village, student family housing, or in the graduate student housing areas. Um, in total, kind of averaging between 3,500 per semester, all the way up to low $6,000 per semester. The, the recommendation for you is a 5% increase in residence halls and a 7% increase in Ram Village and Beatty Hill Apartments. And so you, you see, uh, what that corresponds to in terms of, of dollars there. Uh, and again, the residence hall and the Ram Village piece, undergraduate housing there, and then the other three categories really being primarily graduate student housing. And you can see the dollar, dollar rates associated with that. I think the next slide is particularly informative about what that, what that actually corresponds to and what that allows you to think about in terms of the trade-offs that were considered in putting this in front of you. At the, at the 5% level, you're really starting to cover all your known operating costs. 3%, you weren't really getting to that place. It starts to allow you to to be able to make some progress on some of the deferred maintenance and some minimal progress towards starting to build the position back to be able to address some of the longer-term planning with camp, campus master plan. The 7% goes a little step further. Um, so again, that recommendation to you is 5% at the residence hall level and then 7% for Ram Village and Beatty Hall. That's on housing. On dining, where, um, I, I did want to note, just, just going through this, again, this is, um, UNC Chapel Hill's program is, is voluntary. This is unique in the system. Um, it's not typical. And so I, I, I do think that's a, an important point. Um, that students do not, are not required to have to purchase the plan. So it makes us remain competitive there. You can see some of the historical rates pre-COVID, we were in the two to 3% increase posture. Um, since then, we have increased a little bit more the last couple of years. That's in line with just food away from home and the cost increases there. So that's one of the main drivers that we consider when, when, when putting that forward and the pricing for you. Um, we, we do look comparatively, we are similar to other voluntary dining programs and we are lower than the others in, in the system generally. When we talk about the needs driving the increases, uh, this is going to sound somewhat familiar, but, but there's been some, just, uh, generally we've got increased food costs. Many of you are, are aware of that, especially, specifically running, uh, depending on your business, you, you'll be very familiar with the increased food costs and labor costs and, um, that. So that's a, that's been a big pressure. There's also just deferred maintenance. You, you see, we, we noted a couple of projects there, but there continues to be a lot of pressure on that piece. One other challenge with, with establishing rates is the timing difference. Rates begin early next fall. We're trying to project what inflation will look like and we're doing it at this point in time. So there's a little bit of a lag and that's when the start's is next fall, right? So it's, it's a bit, so there's some, in, in, and you're always trying to hedge with risk just with, uh, uh, what, what's unexpected and trying to protect against that to some degree. So the, the proposal in front of this, this body is a 7.4% increase. It's equivalent to about 99 cents, uh, per meal. And it, it, I believe it covers most of the known operating costs. And, and the idea is just again, to balance the, we're trying to find that right balance to cover costs, a margin for, for maintenance. And, and again, the primary basis just on inflation and what the projections look like there. So I know I covered a lot of ground pretty quickly. I'm happy to go back over in, any pieces of those at all or expand on any questions. Occupancy? It, it's nearly 100%. I don't want to say 100, it's like 98.
Based on, and, and just looking at it, I mean, we're recommending five to seven. We know that our cost increases are going to be much more than five to seven. So at the end of the day, we're potentially subsidizing some of these. So I don't think it should be a whole lot of heartache to, to be able to digest this, especially considering, you know, when you get phone calls from folks saying, do you have other people that, you know, people wanting to live off campus? You can't find anything off campus, which is even more than this. So uh, I'm perfectly okay with some of these numbers. And I think even on the food side, you know, that 7.4% increase, Marty will tell you, I will tell you, we're not much in the food business, we do some of it. It's a whole lot higher than what, what we're proposing over here. So even with these increases, I think there's going to be some subsidizing going on based on what the actual cost of being in that business is.
Trustee Cottis, do you have anything to add on that? I would, I would defer to you and trustee Patel for your expertise in that arena.
Yeah, no, I mean, labor cost and food cost are, are way up for sure. So it's got to come from somewhere. The only thing that caught my eye on that was, um, you know, the unfortunate August 28th, um, shooting event. And then that resulting in 300K worth of lost revenue that day, which is um, shows, um, the trickle effect of these, uh, different things coming through. Is there any insurance or loss of business insurance for?
No.
Um, the, the other, um, thing I wanted to note was looking at the tuition use statement for, if you compare like the, uh, 2019 number with, um, the 2023, um, it's of note because this is a narrative that gets thrown around a lot. But it shows that the, the state made investment of 480 million, let's say in 2018 and 571 million in 2023. And that's a $3,200 increase per student, per in-state resident student in their education, $111 million more. So. So that doesn't get said a lot. I mean, we acknowledge that some, but looking at that five year mark, it's worth noting. And maybe that's something that we should communicate better to the public, to let them know that it's not always this cut, but it's $111 million more and $3,200 per student more.
The support is incredibly generous comparatively in higher ed and it's stable. It's been stable, it's been increasing. And it's at a time when that's not happening for other flagships and other, other, other states. So I do think it is noteworthy.
Last thing I wanted to mention was in the non-resident undergrad tuition, you know that it's still three grand below our peers. Have we thought about setting a target date for that to kind of true up to the average? And just go ahead and plan that out and announce at, you know, by this date, we're going to match up and we're going to have increases that will take us there for.
It's a great, great comment.
And it's an average, so it can move, I know, but you know.
It, it's a great comment. We, we, when we had this original conversation a year ago, we thought at somewhere around the 5% increase, which is what we did last year and what's being proposed this year, that we'd start to close that gap and over several years, we would be much closer. What happened, in fact, when we looked at last year among that Board of Governor Pierce said, they were almost nearly 5% increases there as well. So we actually didn't close the gap much. The challenge for us is if, if we go up too much higher above the 5% level, you know, there's some concern, there's a, there's a pretty big sticker shock just in one year and that big a jump.
But don't we have the tuition protection so that when you're signing up, you were locked for the four years?
That, that's only for residents, resident, so not for non-residents.
Well, maybe we, yeah, I was going to say, if you apply that to non-resident for this phase in period, you're not getting people that are in now, you let them complete their degree, but anyone new signing up is going to have to pay at the new rate. You could take kind of a jump and then hold the other lower, just something to think about.
I, I mean, that, that was a, this subject on how to price that and how to get closer, I think is, is worth exploring more. I know we talked a lot to, to Rachel and her team about what, what that, what kind of impact that would have on demand and, and how, how that, how that might be perceived among that group. But we also recognize we, we are under, we are underpriced relative to our peers. And so we know we have some room there. And, and there may be, there may be room to go up even more aggressively there. I think we can continue to look at that.
I've got Trustee Valentine.
For your comment, we'll never catch up if we don't take a bigger jump.
I'll go Trustee Valentine then Trustee Patel.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I was interested to hear about the voluntary nature of the meals. You said we're the only one?
I, I think we're the only one, is that right, Gord? In the UNC system, that's correct.
And so I assume there's a reason for that. And then is that, is that a cost effective decision? Or, I mean, are we? If we had a mandatory system that generate more revenue? I mean, obviously it would, but what percentage of students participate or volunteer? Is it an opt-in? Is it opt-out? What percentage?
It's, it's a, it's a very high percentage that opt in, especially initially. And that unlimited plan is the most popular one, at least initially. Then you see students calibrate a little bit and they start to do the block plans a little bit as they've been here longer and they see how much they're consuming. You know, the volunteer nature is, it, it forces us to compete.
Yeah.
Which is, which isn't a bad thing. Gord, I don't know if you could add anything more to it.
And another thing, you're asking for a 99 cent meal increase as well. Do you, do you allow for tips for staff?
We do not.
Does anyone else in the system?
I seriously doubt it. I'm not aware of any, but I, I would doubt that. Just a question on, on the voluntary piece, one of the things that makes us unique is that our food scores are very high in terms of quality and perception, not, sorry, by quality in terms of the way our rankings. And yes, there is a high number. It's, it's probably 95 plus percent for incoming freshmen because it's really their only option. They don't live in apartments that have kitchens. So it's, you know, it's about as close as mandatory on that, on that first year. You'll get other students who live on campus who may opt out if they live in one of the dorms where there are kitchen, you know, facilities, et cetera. But you know, for us, it is, it makes us do our job every year and keeps us and keeps staff. We know that we have to produce a high quality product because anytime they can, they can leave.
One last thing, and I understand privacy issues, but is there a way to try to discover if that 5% non-volunteers are because of costs? And if there's something we can do to help with that, if that was the case?
We, I can, I don't have that on my head, but I think we could probably break down some of the reasons why people don't participate. Yeah, and I, and I know with, with our financial aid packages too, they try to take into account cost of attendance, which includes food, housing, all those components times. So there's certainly efforts made there as well to try to address that.
Nate, we've had this discussion about out of state, I mean, non-resident tuition already. I mean, I think that we have a huge opportunity, just considering the number of applications that we get in-state versus out-of-state. And it's not something that's on a downward trajectory, it's actually on an upward trajectory. Until we start seeing a diminishing return, I think we need to be as aggressive as we can. You know, we're capped in the number of out-of-state students we can take and we're capped on the in-state tuition. So the only place there is an opportunity is non-resident tuition. So, and then I like what Marty had to say, you know, kind of have a plan out into the future, saying this is where we want to be and this is where, how long it's going to take for us to get there.
Yes, sir. Yeah, no, I completely agree with Trustee Patel and, and Trustee Cottis. That idea I think is terrific. I mean, can we put that on a shot clock? I mean, can we have a recommendation?
Absolutely.
Next meeting?
Absolutely, we can, we can explore that further and see if there's a more aggressive strategy and we could, we could put a couple of options out there and, and start to think through that. I mean, we, we jumpstarted that conversation a year ago because we're interested in closing that gap. It's just, we didn't expect the peers to be doing, actually increasing at about the same level. That was just a little bit surprised.
Trustee Cottis?
One more idea, you know, we heard earlier talking about staff pay and not being able to afford to live around here. One option might be if you pay with your one card, there's not a tip line. But if you pay with a credit card, you're a guest, there is a tip line. And that could be additional revenue for the staff. Because everywhere else you go, you're going to have a tip line.
You have a tip line when you can go and get takeout.
Yeah. So just a thought, maybe we could explore that as well because that would then be additional revenue for our staff and.
Sure.
Normal cost.
I, I'd be happy to go back and talk through that with the team and see if there's a way to incorporate that. I mean, obviously some of those folks, the air, air mark and, and we rely on them as the third party contractor, our service provider. And they're, they're great folks that we want to make sure are, are properly compensated. And, and really we view them as university employees and part of our team and want to make sure that they're, they're well compensated.
Trustee Broner.
Thank you. I was struck on 34, the historic housing rate increases and how far below market they are. So either we started way above market and we're catching up, or we're being coy and recommending 5%. Which is it?
Yeah, I, I think, I think we're on, when you look comparatively, we are underpriced in the market. I mean, it's a, when you look at our housing rates, they're, they're incredibly affordable, probably too affordable. I think it's, it's, we've gotten to a point where we have hit a critical juncture where we need to be able to rebuild some, some reserves. We'd be able to do some things on, on R and R there, which is.
So what was the thinking behind 7% or 5% instead of 7 then?
Well, the, the five was, it was trying to find a balance. And just, we're always trying to be mindful of cost of attendance. I mean, it, it's, it's what, it, it's what you're, here, I, I feel like the university, we're always in that, in that position where we're trying to generate enough income to do, to provide the right kind of experience there in, in the dorms, but also be able to, to maintain that, that commitment to affordability and access and that cost of attendance. And so we're mindful of that anytime we do. It's interesting, before we had a big budgeting process. The, in some background, we, housing rates and dining rates didn't even come before the board three years ago. So this was, this was actually, I think, a, a positive development that we have these conversations, positive that we have a budget where we can consider those increases and the impact it might create on financial aid, which is some of the balance we, we try to look at when we're setting those.
Trustee Blaine.
Yeah. Vice Chancellor. I have several questions. First was, you, you mentioned operating costs and whether or not the fees cover them. Do our housing fees cover the operating cost of housing students? Or are we subsidizing?
No, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the, those auxiliary operations have to be self-supporting. So the, the fees they charge need to, need to provide for all the employees there, including while there's housekeeping staff that provides services, housing actually pays for that.
Okay, so, but they don't, it doesn't cover capital costs generally.
Correct, and that's, that's part of the challenge, although we've been trying to build some reserve to be able to be, to be able to make more.
And same, I had the same question for the dining costs. Do the student fees with the meal plans cover all the dining costs except for the kind of capital expenses?
And they do cover capital too. So both, both do, although that, that's, that's I think some of the challenge and why the rates are being pushed up is to build in the ability to be able to make more progress on some of the capital needs.
And you know, those of you who know me will be the, know that I'll be the last person to argue for bars to enter into the journalism and legal profession in the state of North Carolina. But 8% in-state tuition increases seem pretty high to me. 6% for industry too. Is there any consideration of a, of a lower rate?
We did not get into that, at least at the committee level. We felt like there was compelling evidence that even with the rate increase on the resident side, it would still be priced below peers and competitively, which is really the, the board policy, which has asked us to price them to market. And we felt like it satisfied that objective.
Does all the graduate school tuition stay within that graduate program?
It, it does currently. So school-based tuition, the school-based tuition piece, currently all of that tuition does stay at the program. We are having conversations at the university level about revisiting how all tuition and appropriation is allocated at the campus.
And then I just want to reiterate something that Marty had mentioned earlier. And I know it's a Board of Governors policy, but I, I just want to voice that I, I continue to have a significant philosophical problem with the idea that we should charge students higher tuition. And you know, some of them are working to put themselves through school so that they can then subsidize financial aid to other students in their program. That just seems really backwards, backwards to me. Oh, I under, I understand that it's a cap, but I think my, my objection is that it happens at all.
Understood. Okay, yeah, I have, so Trustee Blaine, I'm with you. I, I, my notes that I wrote down were, I am uneasy about a, an increase in resident to percentage tuition as compared to non-resident. I'm uneasy with that as, as a member of the board, particularly the subsidy that we get from the General Assembly and the taxpayers of the state. And I get the dollar figure, but and, and again, to your point, Trustee Blaine, we had talked about the student aid component during budget discussions fairly indepthly. And I think it's probably most pronounced in the law school. Am I right? Am I recalling that right? Trustee Cottis, I think it was the law school that had the most student aid as a percentage. Nate, am I right about that?
They do allocate a significant percentage to financial aid. And if, when we look at the all funds budget and you see the amount allocated there in the school of law, you'll see it, it's a little bit elevated level.
You know, for, for, from, from my position, I'm uneasy. I don't know that I can support an 8% increase in resident tuition for the school of law and the school of journalism with a, with a, with a smaller non-resident percentage. I'm, I'm just not going to be able to personally support that.
I will note on the husband school increases, there, one thing missing from that chart is just the number of students that that elevated tuition is going to apply to. I think all in those two rates, we're going to generate about $60,000, so six zero.
Yeah, I don't think it's a lot of money. I think it's just the principle. Is there any additional discussion? Or?
Chair Bullock, how, how do you want to vote this?
Well, I'm going to, yeah, Trustee Turner had one question and then we'll go.
I'm sorry. Yeah, just maybe Kevin draw you in here. Tuition fee policy approach. Any thoughts, having heard this conversation? I think you've heard a number of different topics arise here, but where do you set your thoughts?
Yeah, no, thank, thank you. And, and I really think it's important that as Vice Chancellor Knufman just talked about, the FTA committee spends a lot of time on this, the deans and work with their financial teams to put these proposals together. These are obviously real dollars. Part of, of that is to support, I understand the concern about supporting subsidizing tuition for other students in those programs. But it's also about the way in which we recruit and retain the best faculty. And we have fallen behind significantly when you compare some benchmark against our peers. And I know that there's very little that we can do. I think as Trustee Patel said earlier, with regard to some of these issues, this is one that we can. And I think that school-based tuition is important. And I've, I've talked with several of the deans around this. I don't want to speak for the provost, but I know that he hears often about the need to try to close the gap between us and, and many of our peers with respect to these professional schools. So I rely heavily on that feedback as well as the committee that works hard on this. And I don't know, Nate, if you want to say more about that process for some of the newer board members. But I fully support these increases. And even if these were approved, it still keeps us in the lower quartile, I believe, in, in most cases with regard to tuition.
And you know, my son just graduated from law school when, when I was looking at it with him as far as pricing.
Trustee Meekins, you want to turn the mic on?
Sorry. Yeah, my son just graduated from UNC Law School and we looked at the price points. It was incredibly affordable for, for one of the better law schools in the country, especially considering they're now up in the lower twenties as far as rankings. Journalism school is similar. So I would very much support the increases that the committee has recommended.
Any additional sort of discussion points? Because I'm, I'm going to propose that we handle each one of these items in, in turn. And the first item I would like to consider is the proposed campus-based tuition plan proposed by Vice Chancellor Knufman. That is the no increase in resident, a 5% increase in non-resident, a 2% increase in resident and 2% increase in non-resident for the graduate consecutively. So I'll take that up as an action item. And do I have a motion to approve that? I have a motion from Trustee Patel and I have a second from Trustee Blaine. Is there any discussion, Trustee Cottis?
I would just say, you know, again, we're, we're not going to catch up on the non-resident with the 5%. So I'm fine with this for this year. But I'd like to see a plan for us to true up. And I understand the concern about the sticker shock. But I think there's a way for us, it may be a little bit more complicated, but a way for us to let people continue their degree and not have that bump. You know, give them a guarantee they sign up, they, they get locked in for, or not more than 5%. 5% increases, let's say during the time they're there, but we've got to, at some point we've got to catch up.
Sure. Any other discussion on that? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, right? Um, let's now take up the, uh, the proposed school-based tuition increase. And, uh, I would, I would propose a substitute motion at this point. And that, um, we propose a, uh, 3% increase in resident tuition for Hussman School and an 8% increase for non-resident. Or you could even say 6% because I think that might even be closer to the right number. But, but I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I'm going to, I mean, it's just, it, it'll be a no for me and maybe the committee would vote yes, but I'm not prepared to approve a, a higher percentage increase for residents.
Mr. Chairman, would you be willing to set aside that discussion so we can approve the less controversial issues first?
Yes, I would. Let's, let's move forward then with the dining and housing. We'll package all that into one, if that's okay. Uh, do I have a motion to approve the, uh, the dining and housing? I have a motion from trustee Blaine. I have a second from Vice Chair Turner. Uh, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Let's go to the, um, let's, for, for, for purposes of Robert's rules, let's have a motion. Do I have a motion to approve the, uh, uh, school-based tuition increase? I have a motion from, uh, trustee Meekins and a second from Chair Pryor. And so I'll open it up for discussion. I, I, again, I'm uneasy with the higher percentage increase for, um, resident students. Uh, I, I clearly understand the dollar amount, but I just don't think that it's, um, the right thing to do, particularly when, when I know from budget, uh, work, the high percentage of dollars, particularly in the school of law that go to student aid from tuition receipts. So we have students, and in this case, at an 8% increase of resident students helping to supplement in some respects, non-resident students. And I have a, I have a problem with that. Sure.
If they increase the non-resident students to the same percentage, would that alleviate your concern or would you still have a concern?
I, I would have no concerns if it was increased the same amount. So if you're offering that as a substitute motion, I would accept that.
It, what one, one suggestion might be that we confer with the school just to make sure if we're going to, if we're going to change pricing, that we just make sure we're, we're, some of these are pretty sensitive to where they're at in the market and are the product of a lot of analysis to get to that stage.
Discussion item.
Vice Chancellor Knufman, is there any reason you can't look at some options on this this evening and we couldn't reconvene this committee meeting tomorrow morning and try to sort this out?
Great. Motion to table this for the full board. I have a motion on the floor from, uh, trust, uh, before that, further discussion, yes, trustee Codis.
Wanted to find out if that was enough time, because if not, we could always table this and then pick this back up with a, either a ballot or a, a follow-up. We're going to have, I mean, yeah. I just don't want to rush and if we can't, if we can't get feedback from.
The point well taken. I got it.
I, I think, I think we can, I think we can, I think we can probably huddle and, and get back to you.
So do I have a motion to remove the motion to approve? I have a motion from Chairman Pryor. Do I have a second on that? I have a second from trustee Codis. All those in favor of removing the motion to approve, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Okay. Do you have a motion to table this? No.
Motion to table? Till tomorrow?
Well, it's on the, it's been on the agenda, so I've got to remove it from the agenda or table it and table in it would be moving it to a discussion or maybe a motion to consider it at a later time. I have a motion from the chair.
Second.
And I have a second from trustee Blaine. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Great. All right. So we'll take that up at a further time. Thank you, Vice Chancellor Knufman. We want to make sure we get it right. All right, um, no other action items. I have a real quick, quick item of discussion. Um, and that is, I had asked Vice Chancellor Knufman to add a quick discussion of use of executive search firms. Uh, throughout my four years on the board, we have, we have used, uh, a lot of executive search firms for tier one, tier two and other, uh, staff here at the university. And if it's okay with the, with the, with the committee, I would like to ask, uh, Vice Chancellor Knufman to bring us a report on our use of executive search firms at the university. How much money we've spent over the last several years and, and what we're getting in return from the use of search firms. Yes, sir. Trustee Codis.
I, I think for the last couple of meetings, we haven't had anything new on the, uh, audit list. Another option would be, uh, a minimal audit. If you wanted to, to use that department rather than using.
I think it may be, and I think that's a great idea. I think it'd be easier for Vice Chancellor Knufman, in full disclosure, I've had a discussion with him and I think he's putting that information together, his team is.
Yeah, and, and had several good conversations with Becky and, and others, uh, and, and we'll, we'll be, we'll have some information to report back to you.
Right. Okay. And can we have that for the January meeting?
Yes.
Great. Thanks. I've got one other item real quick.
I want to get, uh, Chairman Pryor an opportunity to, uh, to the, uh, award, the best achievement award that.
That's the recognition that our board received from, uh, yeah, the American Council of Trustees and Alumni Act in Washington DC a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the Jerry L. Meekins Award, uh, for excellence in trusteeship. And, uh, several board members were there. Uh, those of you who are not, I wanted to have the opportunity to show it's kind of a neat, uh, presentation of a news article of, uh, from, from, from many, many years ago that was presented to us as sort of a token. And I've asked, and so is Chairman Pryor, the end to consider finding a place for that here and they're working on that to recognize our board, um, with that respect. So I wanted to just have the opportunity for board members to have a chance to see that. Um, okay, with, I'm, I'm got it. I got it. Yeah. One or more item for action, and that is all the items, uh, on the, uh, Budget and Finance Committee to be moved to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to do that? I have a motion from Chairman Pryor and a second from trustee Codis. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. All right, great. Thanks. Uh, we're adjourned.